I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do the roll call of members. Mr. Jeter?
Here.
Ms. Glover?
Here.
Mr. Ski?
Here.
Mr. Bricky?
Here.
Mr. Castile?
Here.
Mr. Manus?
Here.
Ms. Addington?
Here.
Next, we'll set the term of office for chairperson and vice-chairperson. In the past, this is usually a one-year term, so I'll open the floor for discussion or a motion to set the term of office.
I'll make a motion to set the term of office for one year.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Jeter, seconded by Ms. Addington. Any discussion? If not, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we'll elect a chairperson for 2024. Do I have any nominations for chairperson?
I'll nominate Michael Bricky.
Mr. Jeter has nominated Mr. Bricky. Any other nominations?
I'll make the motion, nomination cease, and we vote by acclamation.
Ms. Addington's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of Mr. Bricky for chairman for 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take just a brief minute to rearrange, and then we'll be right back.
While we're doing that, I would like to say that I did have a discussion with Mr. Bricky and about his approach toward problem solving in the next year, and very excited that he was wanting to do that, and was going to be aggressive in taking steps to work with us on that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
twenty at my house, but it's good to see all these citizens out this morning. And I just want to say that you probably just saw something, some of you, for the first time. We don't show the prayer or the pledge online. They turn on the TVs afterwards. But I think it's great that we start that way, and a lot of times, we've had people come up and say, "Thank you for doing that." So I just wanted to mention that. This is a new board. This is the organizational meeting, the annual organizational meeting for the year. There's one, for the next four years, there'll be one in the first of January to begin the year. Supervisors, thank you for the responsibility. I think we'll see how it goes. This is an awesome responsibility, and I realize that, but I also realize I'm only one vote. We've got seven votes, and each of you have an opinion, and I'm going to recognize that. There are many strong personalities on this board, and I think that we can gel into a good cohesive group over the next year. I certainly hope so. My responsibility would be to conduct the meeting, keep the meeting moving smoothly, and to keep us on topic, which I will try to do. We'll try to stay on topic. I will tell you, you probably know there are over fifty, fifty more or less departments that we're over, that we have to budget, we have to find the money to pay for, and it's not an easy job. It will never be an easy job, but I also want to tell you that our staff are professionals. Us supervisors come from all different walks of life, but these people that we work with, Frida, Sally, Bill, these two ladies on the side are all professionals. They've gone to school for years, master's degrees plus, to do what they're doing. So I just want them to know that I appreciate them. There's a lot for you to deal with. We, at the end of our meeting today, supervisors' comments, we're going to, the new supervisors have a list of questions that they've come with, that they want answered. And we've got a lot of department heads and constitutional officers back here that will help us with that. And we'll spend enough time afterwards, and I would ask that you all stay too to get that, would you? You'll stay for that? There's a lot to learn, and I've described it in the past as trying to drink out of a fire hose. It's hard to do all this stuff that hits you at once. I'll try to keep the meeting flowing in an orderly manner and to stay on the topic we're discussing. We've got one year and twelve meetings to go, and at this time, we will begin. The first thing on the agenda that we have to take care of is to elect a vice-chairperson. And we will open the floor for a nomination for a vice-chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Chris Manus.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll nominate Stephanie Addington.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second, I guess.
Okay, don't need a second, okay. So we have two persons, Chris Manus and Stephanie Addington, that have been nominated for vice chair. All those in favor of Mr. Chris Manus for vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hands.
We're going to have to do hands, yes, please. Four? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Ms. Stephanie Addington for vice chair, raise your hand, please. Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Manus.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda, we need to set a meeting date and time to meet for 2024. It's been typically the first Wednesday in the month at eight-thirty. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Second Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
I'm sorry, first Wednesday?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, yes.
I think there is some discussion on that.
Okay. Do we have a second for this?
I'll second that one.
Okay, have the motion, it's been seconded, open for discussion.
I think the citizens of Scott County are wanting evening meetings, and I would think that we should go with the citizens and have some of the evening meetings. If we did lock half the year in the morning and then half the year in the evening.
Alternate or do first six months morning, last six months evening?
We talked about when the time changes. Some of us can't drive as well after dark, so we thought if we did it, that would be a good time to do it.
What time were you thinking?
Six-thirty, but I believe that we would have to change the day from a Wednesday to a different day because Wednesday, people go to church in the evenings, and I just don't think that that would work at all. But I think it would have to be another, a different day. Tuesday, Thursday, just a different day.
Okay, we have a motion. Any more discussion?
We tried the evening one time, but it didn't work too good. But it's, I don't know if you want to try it, but as far as whatever y'all want, it don't matter to me one way or the other. People thought that might show up, more people show up if we had it in the evening, but it didn't, it didn't help. We tried it seven, eight years ago or something. We tried it, but it didn't help. I don't know about switching back and forth because I think it will confuse people when the meeting is.
I agree.
If we go, I really think we might need to go, if we wanted a evening, go a evening, streak through all year. I think it would confuse a lot of people that didn't know when the meeting was, if they wanted to come or something, but like I said, I can go along with whatever.
Bear in mind, we'd have to keep all of the county office employees for that duration of that day as well, if it was at the evening.
I'd like to say something. A lot of people said they would like to come to the meetings on the other night because they couldn't get here at the mornings they worked. I'd be willing to, if y'all would, maybe six months of them at the evenings, six months of them at the mornings that way, and make them all the same time at the mornings, and then the next six months, make them at the evenings. Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion on the floor for the first Wednesday of the month at eight-thirty. All that would be in favor of that, I suppose, let's raise your hand, please. Okay. Now we're going to need a motion for another time and another day.
I'm opposed to Wednesdays evenings for church purposes because I don't want to do that. I don't want to miss church.
Same here. Are there any others during that week that we would have to schedule around in the evenings? Because I know some of the planning commission may be meeting at the evenings as well.
There's a bunch that would be meeting.
Yeah, I have evening meetings as well. I have two boards that meet on Tuesdays of the evenings, but they're later in the month. They're not like the first Tuesday.
PSA's during the day, Lenoir-Whiskos is at night.
I think we should definitely make sure it's consistent the day instead of alternating back and forth. The whole point of moving it to the evening would be more accessible to people, and making it, you know, change in the middle of the year might confuse a lot of people. So Tuesday or Thursday, maybe do it a little bit earlier too, so it's not such a long day for the county employees, maybe six. Might make it a little time for folks to get here, but I think that gives them time to meet supper afterwards.
Do you want to make that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do it on Tuesday, I guess, at six.
First Tuesday?
Yeah.
All year?
Yeah.
Is that the day the school board meets as well?
It is, yes, it is.
It seems to me that there's a lot of meetings on Tuesday. Why not choose Thursday?
Yeah, let's do Thursday then.
So you amend your amendment to Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Manus is to change the meeting date to the first Thursday at six o'clock. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That motion passes. Next on the agenda is adopting the rules of procedure. You all received a booklet which shows the rules of procedure for Scott County Board of Supervisors. We just need to adopt that. Would there be any, I guess we just need a motion at this point to adopt the rules of procedure. I'll make a motion to add on the rules. Second?
Yeah, second.
Mr. Manus, Mr. Jeter, first, please. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Approval of the agenda? Is there anything to be added to the agenda today?
We do need to remove item fourteen C, the Scott Service Program update. That will be in February.
Okay. Anything else? That's it, isn't it?
That's all I know of.
Okay, need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'm sorry, agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Jeter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the minutes need to be approved. Approval of the minutes of last meeting?
I have some questions on the minutes of the last meeting regarding the amending of the budget. There were some increases in the department's salaries, and I would like to know why these took place.
Those were cost of living increases that were given to the staff.
How much cost increase was that?
Two percent.
Okay. Well, some of these, there was one that was at least eleven percent increase.
Which department?
County attorney.
They got, county attorneys are paid for by the compensation board. The state sets their salaries, and they were given bigger adjustments. So if you do the math, compensation board staff is completely different than county staff, and they're paid for by the state.
Can you identify those that's on the amended?
Everybody got a two percent cost of living increase, all constitutional officers. Because of that, the Board of Supervisors voted to do the same for the county staff.
So everybody got a two percent?
Mm-hmm. And that takes effect, some of those constitutional officers took effect in December, and county staff took effect January first.
Which one did you, were you asking about?
The...
That was eleven percent?
They were county attorney.
Some of those.
It was deferred for earlier in the year. I didn't take it at the beginning, whatever else got it. So it started this month. That's good.
I was just noticing whenever I went through all of these, that was a larger increase than what everybody got.
I'm sorry. I heard attorney, because I know the comp board did adjust their form. So that's my fault, sorry.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We need a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
So moved.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, make the motion. Ms. Addington, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we come to the time for citizens' expression, and there is a statement that I need to read. Citizen's expression period is the point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. Anybody signed up to speak?
Ms. Tice.
Okay, Ms. Tice. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Citizens' expression is open, Ms. Tice?
Man, nervous now. I have to wait through all this. But good morning, I'm Peggy Tice. I'm from Snowflake Road, Big City, Virginia, Scott County. I want to welcome all the new members and all of them, and hope everyone had a blessed Christmas, and thank y'all for listening to me complain again about dirt roads. We've been running on soup roads the last little bit this rain, and I think that I would like to think about being considered would be this six-year plan, be something done different about that because it's working not to get dirt roads paid, but not working to me to get them paid because there's two-hundred-and-fifty miles of dirt roads in Scott County. And I saw on the news that Virginia was awarded seven million dollars, and a lot of it went to Big Stone Gap. I don't know what water projects or whatever, but I didn't hear that Scott County got any, anything. And we would like to have a piece of the pie too. So, and the dirt roads, I've got several people here from Snowflake Road, would y'all stand up? And now, all dirt roads. Anybody here? All dirt roads. And another concern that I would like to mention is, like, the money that is for primary roads that doesn't need primary roads be moved to secondary roads. And I'm hearing, you know, that has to come down from Richmond. So Mr. Kilgore needs to address this problem, I think, and maybe get some changes made better. And I guess I'm here too to make sure that Snowflake Road is kept on the sixty-year, the six-year plan. Thank y'all for listening to me. And Laura Bledsoe wants to speak too.
Ms. Tice, I'd like to say something for you. You're one of the main reasons that I'm sitting here today for what you've been doing for the last year or so, so I appreciate that.
I hope I didn't talk in front of anybody, but that's same appropriate that I speak at the same time as Peggy. My name is Richard Gillan-Moore. I live in the Midway community. And I spoke to supervisors last year, problem I'd speak, told them, we're not on the six-year plan. I know three men who died trying to get on the six-year plan. So we just think there's a better way, surely, to get something down to the roads in Scott County. The supervisors told me last year there was nothing they could do about dirt roads in Scott County. It was beyond their control. And I suggested I talk to Mr. Kilgore, which I did. I just recently talked to him again, and he said he was under the impression that money had been supplied to B-DOT to do work on our roads, and he was a little surprised that something wasn't done. I also heard that some members of last year's supervisors met with Mr. Kilgore, and they made a statement saying, "You're going to see a big change in the roads in Scott County." And the only change we've seen is that the weather's gotten worse. Nothing being done. So with that in mind, I totally support what Peggy is saying. We need a different way to get our roads fixed. I got one last comment, different subject. There is no recycling going on in Scott County now as it relates to plastic or cardboard that I'm aware of. We see in the newspaper, we've got a company, two companies in Kingsport, Don Tar, who is doing heavily recycling cardboard now. That's their source of raw material. So why don't we do that again, make them decrease some of their costs upon stuff in the landfills and give us some more money? And second is plastics, and Eastman is close to bringing a plane online to recycle plastics. And I saw where they're making, have already made a run, that's with Food City, to pick up plastics. So I'm just asking that some of your staff be excited to find out how we can do some of that, take advantage of that, and keep stuff out of landfills as well as decrease our costs. Thank you.
Good morning, and welcome to the meetings that I've not met before. I'm part of the Snowflake Road crew. My name's Laura Bledsoe. I just want to kind of discuss the issues that are affecting how I'm able to get in and out of my house because of the road and my driveway situation. My driveway, of course, connects to the road. I can use probably a third of my driveway because the ruts are so bad and so big that you can't get a vehicle in or out. I have a two-car garage, and I can use one side, and it's a puzzle to get in and out of it. And no matter what type of work we do, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't help, it doesn't matter. And a lot of it is because of the way that the road is angled. There's a drain tile underneath between the driveway and the road, but water's never touched that. It's never, ever had water in it. It's got rocks in it, and it's been cleaned out several times, but water doesn't run through it. So it's kind of defeats the purpose there. A few weeks ago, FedEx truck came, pulled up, backed in my little area that I've got there to get in, my driveway. She tried to pull out and go the other way, got stuck in that ditch, blocked the whole driveway. I had somewhere I had to be. So I'm trying to work a puzzle to get my car out of my little garage and try to get, I had to go through my yard and go through a hayfield to get out on the road, because they had to get somebody to come and pull that FedEx truck out. So, I mean, I pay my taxes, and it's a shame that I can't use my property as I had intended to when I built your garage so that I could put my vehicles in the garage, protect, you know, what I pay for every month. I just ask that, if there's any way that anybody can get up to Richmond and tell them that their six-year plan is, is not working. There needs to be something that's done. And it's disheartening too, to see, and I know this is nothing to do with you guys, but it is disheartening to see when you go through our county and there's dead end roads that have been paved for years, and then they go and they resurface them, and the roads that lead up to our little dirt road have potholes that are horrible that you're dodging all the time. Like, it's just so disheartening, and I just wish that people that make this decision would come down here and check out some stuff. And if you ever get a chance, go run around and go through stuff like, it's a beautiful place. We have the zoo on our road. It can take you to about anywhere that you want to go, Dougannon, you know, I mean, it's just a beautiful place, and it's just a shame that the road is in the shape that it's in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public expression?
I'm Gary Baker from Public Committee. I want to welcome all of you all to the being elected today as board, and good to see a change. The reason I'm here, on behalf of the citizens up there, our ditch lines and the roads are in such bad shape that another hard rain will probably get some of it, which Michelle has seen one place up there on a hill. If that section falls out, it's going to close that hole up. And I'd like to, I know some of them on the board that's on here now said last time that there was nothing they could do with B-DOT. Well, I don't know why y'all can't write letters, maybe the county attorney or the county administrator to the governor and secretary of transportation every week if you have to, get some help down here. And that's one of them. And that's one of the things I wanted to discuss. Oh, by the way, some of them on VDOT, and I know a gentleman I talked to on the outside said the EPA was a big cause of why they couldn't get you. Well, why does Tennessee get to play? I reckon as far as I know, Tennessee is still a state in the U.S., just like Virginia is. So I don't know why we can't get something done, but anyway, the second thing that the morning I bring up is these trash dumpsters being open on Sunday. I know some of the people from Tennessee were over there trashing our dumpsters, but you know, we never did have that big of a problem, I don't think. They wanted to see if there was anything you all could do about getting them things open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So anyway, I appreciate your time and congratulations to each and every one of you, and I hope you all can make a change. Thank you all.
You. Anyone else for public expression?
Mr. Chairman, we are going to be discussing quite extensively at the end of the meeting some VDOT issues, but I notice Mr. Kilgore is here today. Would you like to ask him to speak on the road situation?
You ready, Mr. Kilgore?
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I just came over here to congratulate you really, but while we're here, we'll talk a little bit about the road situation, you know. The road situation in Virginia was set up years ago. There was a bill passed that basically, you know, hurt some of the rural areas because it was basically a lot of the money with cars going, and all of that money went to primary roads. And that's basically what we've been fighting over the years to try to get money on some of these secondary roads. But the way the budget is set up, there's money that goes into primary roads. A lot of that money, or some of that money, some of it, you know, comes from different pots, some federal money, state money, et cetera. But then the secondary roads are basically VDOT's responsibility and the state's responsibility. And, you know, it's just been a never-ending battle. We did pass bills that allowed paving in place because we were getting to a situation where that, you know, you go out and do all this engineering on a road, and it would cost so much money by the time you got the engineering done and trying to bring it up to state standards, that we did pass some legislation, gosh, that's been years ago, that allow paving in place, which should be cheaper. But, you know, it's been a never-ending battle trying to get paved roads. And in some parts of state, they don't want the roads paved. In Loudoun County and some places like that, they don't want them because they think it's a, you know, it's better for them and their farms. But it's something that we've been pushing with VDOT. And, you know, if there's road situations, just please let us know. And, you know, we call VDOT at least three, four times a week trying to get ditches cleaned. And for all, now I've got four counties, for all four counties that we try to work with. But basically, it's just a funding issue. And, you know, when y'all come to Richmond, we'll try to set you up a meeting with the Commissioner of Highways or Commissioner of VDOT so that you can express your concerns to that person.
We did, I think Ms. Stornes will be discussing at the end about work session for VDOT and rural roads, are you planning on doing that?
Yeah.
And we would like to have you attend that work session. Will you make that commitment to do that?
Well, it depends on when it is. I've got another commitment, I've got to be in Richmond for the next three months. So it depends on when it is, I'd be more than happy to, or be more than happy to try to zoom in if, depending on what time it is, we'll try to get zoomed in. Or I can't stay the whole time, maybe my staff can zoom in. It just depends on when it is, when the work session is.
I think you've heard today that what's in place now is not working, so we need something different.
Right, yeah, I've heard that, and we, you know, we try to, a lot of the rural legislators, we come together and try to address that issue. Of course, southwest Virginia is a lot different than Southside or some of the other rural areas because our roads are a little bit harder to, you know, pave and things of that nature because of the terrain, you know, in Southside or, you know, some of them are really more rural than we are. Most of their roads are paved, but they're all flat. And, you know, that doesn't cost a lot of money to do flat roads. So, you know, that's some of the issues that we have to address, you know, terrain and things of that nature. But we're more than happy to set up meetings for you and try to figure out how to solve them, try to figure out, and I agree with you, the six-year plan is not a six-year plan. I don't know what it is, it's like a 10-year plan or a 15-year plan, I don't know. If it's a six-year plan, we need to, if we make a commitment to a six-year plan, we need to stick to a six-year plan, I agree with you on that. Well, thank you all, and I look forward to working with you, and not only on roads, but economic development, other issues. You know, just, you know, call me, most of you have my cell number anyway, so just call me, and we'll try to talk through things and any other issues you have. But this year's budget, most of the year in the general sense is going to be based on the budget and what, you know, what comes about through that budget. Virginia's been blessed, and like other states, we do have a surplus this year. And we are trying to make some recommendations on the budget, so thank you all. And thank you for your service, you're at the level where you have the most contact with citizens. And, you know, I appreciate your all's service, and it's a hard job, but thank you for stepping up to doing this job, thank you all, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else for public expression? With that, we will close public expression. And certainly take into consideration what you've all said. It's, three of us have heard it for four years now, and it'll be good to see if these others can add anything to it. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance. Is Mr. John Ferguson here? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations once again, as W. Kilgore had expressed. With me I have Mr. Robbie Sally, who's Supervisor of the Maintenance Department for the School Division. I've asked for this consideration for a number of years simply because of the amounts that we are being charged for items to use within a school division. I was trying to think back, it used to be up to $500 prior to receiving or getting quotes. And then we went from that up to $999.99. And now we're asking for the consideration as presented that Ms. Stornes has provided for you to up the amounts in terms of our procurement in order to buy the necessary materials without having to spend a whole lot of time trying to find additional bids for these same materials from different vendors. So that is my request for your consideration with the with the document that was provided for you to approve or make changes to. That's all that I have. Sally, would you like to add anything?
Yes, I'd like to maybe just cover just a few things. Say good morning to each of the administrative staff here this morning, and also to each of the board members. And I'd like to say thanks for allowing time to speak on this. As far as the maintenance supervisor, I've been the supervisor since 2010. And ever since I've been there as a supervisor, it's been a challenge in various areas. I know we certainly worked with and called the number, emailed the speakers there many, many times, and then also Sally Cephalos helps us out at various times. The $1,000 limit that we currently have in place, and/or the $999.99 going to the $499.99 would be a tremendous help for the Maintenance Department. One of the things that has been an improvement or a help to us has been cooperative purchasing. It's been a help on items that we've worked with. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with that, I can explain that more, but I won't cover all of that or all the details, I know you're not here for all of that. But for us, in the Maintenance Department at this time, we have 11 guys on staff, and that ranges from the carpentry trade areas to the HVAC, electrical plumbing. And we do a lot of work within the schools and do not contract it out. That's one of the reasons that we do have a staff of the size that we do have. And we do a lot of things that saves a lot of money with the guys that we have. But as these guys are out doing the work, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for these guys to be doing the work in the schools, doing the repairs, doing the renovations, doing whatever they're doing. And a lot of these times, these limits really hinders us getting work done. Sometimes it can be emergency work that's needing to be done as far as maybe a compressor that goes out on a heating and cooling unit that we're providing for a certain classroom. We have about 200 classrooms probably that have individual heating and cooling units. And if we have a compressor that's bad, there's a lot of schools that don't have the room to move the students to another area. And it's over the $1,000, and we've got to stop, we've got to do the bids, got to do the bid sheet, got to get it through, and it's improved also with the new purchasing system that we have. But still, it's just another example of a hindrance in the time, the steps of the process, and the length of the time that it takes. So once again, if this could all possibly be done as far as moving the minimum purchase up to $5,000 would be a tremendous help for us as far as everyday repairs. I'm not standing here and saying it's an everyday hindrance, but it is, it's a drawback to us. For us, once again, the difference could be us having guys out there actually working instead of doing paperwork. And there is, there's items that we can call Kingsport and get three different bids on. There's some items, you know, whenever you go to get something, some electric motors and stuff like that, we're calling Knoxville, we're calling Atlanta, and trying to get these prices. So it's not that everything is right here in Kingsport or in Duffy, or in Wise County that we have the option of going to purchase, so. But there's many items, like fire alarm systems, we kind of do a little bit of a blanket PO, but it doesn't cover some everything, and that's a life safety issue. You know, if we need something taken care of on a life safety issue, you know, it'd be better to be getting it done instead of spending time doing paperwork to try to get it done, so. I could cover many things, but that kind of just, you know, hits the top of there. And like I say, Amy Vickers really works with us a lot, and Sally does too, and things that we're trying to get approved there and stuff, so we appreciate their efforts, what they did with working with the Maintenance Department. And we certainly appreciate your consideration of raising this name, of course. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer anything I could.
Ian, thank you for your consideration of this, thank you.
How much time are we talking about shaving off here? Is it days or weeks, or just depends on the project?
I don't have any kind of a study on that.
Right, just gut feel. Just gut feel, how much?
I mean, it's just going to vary if I had to, you know, a week maybe, you know, could be four or five hours, depends on the items that we're looking for. I mean, there's some items that really leads us into a long chase of trying to find, you know. I mean, if we're trying to find a compressor, like I say, I mean, we can call Kingsport and get three prices on it. But if we're trying to find a three-inch backflop preventer for a school, I mean, we may end up, you know, in a two-day deal of going back and forth between phone calls and emails to try to get things to work out. Obviously, it's not 16 hours involved in that, but it's a holdup sometimes just trying to get that second bid or that third bid, you know. Because, like I say, right now, I mean, we have to be anything over $2,000, I mean, we have to have three bids on it. And where do you get into that, you know, $2,000, how long does it take to spend $2,000 on a repair item, you know? I mean, it's just like a pool station in a school if you're just going to replace it. Pool station is close to $600. By the time we get to pool station, we did the programming on it and get those people out there, I mean, it's $175 for a fire alarm company to show up at school for us, you know.
I do have a question too. I said I do have another question as well. So when you do, if we do $5,000, who has that oversight? Will it be anybody in your department that can spend that up to $5,000? Or will that just, will that still come through you?
Could I interject, just one minute? Rob, Mr. Sally represents just maintenance.
Okay.
Within the school board office, you've got other people, other departments, and they're doing the same thing he is. And it takes a lot of time if you ask for a request for proposal, to get those proposals back in. When a lot of them, these people know who the best people are. And they go ahead if they've got a $5,000, you know, where they have to meet 4999. And you can go ahead, he can go ahead and order what he needs. Whereas the other way, every department has to send out requests for proposals. And that takes some time, doesn't it, Sally?
Yeah, and I am, I'm just responsible for maintenance employees, and so basically anything that's purchased is approved through me initially, and then through Mr. Ferguson there. But that's a good example, you know, is rental equipment. I mean, we rent rental equipment a lot through the course of the year. Mr. Ferguson has worked also there to purchase some big-ticket items for us that we don't have to rent anymore, such as skid steers, and we purchased a lift this past year, which is a great addition to the Maintenance Department. But, I mean, a scissor lift, you know, if we're going to keep that thing up, it's $1,200. And instead of just going and getting it, you know, we're out there trying to get bids, when I know there's nobody that's going to beat United Rental. On the government price rate, and Subbell can't beat them, Action Rentals can't beat them, East Tennessee Rentals can't beat them, but we're spending time getting the plugs, and we know that ain't nobody going to beat them, you know. So it's frustrating sometimes to be wasting time when you know it's wasted time.
And you know the people, you know what the best deal is before you really even ask.
And we know how much everything's gone up the past few years. Mr. Ferguson, do you know how long we've been at $1,000, I guess, right now? How many years has that been? I remember when it was five, and then it went up to 1,000.
I want to say three, about four years, four to five?
I would say four to five years, it's been quite a while.
Is that about right there?
Just think of how much everything has increased in four to five years, so I...
And this is for everybody, public works, sheriff's office, every county office.
Another reason too, we, on a day-to-day basis, as Mr. Sally has expressed, we, you know, maintenance costs, repairs, materials, it's unreal what is invested within our schools on a day-to-day basis.
I hear computers all the time, Mr. Ferguson.
Mr. Chairman, and two, a lot of the times, like tires for the trucks, you know, we want, if they see a tire that needs to be replaced, I want them to replace it, you know, and get it back on the road. And a lot of times when we get that bill, it's over that $1,000 threshold. And so it puts us into like trying to go back and get paperwork right to fit and purchase. So as prices has increased, bids have been made.
Ian, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you for what you do. Anyone else want to have an expression for the public hearing on the ordinance to amend? In that case, we'll go out at the public hearing.
Based on the ordinance, approving the ordinance, and a separate motion for the small purchase procedure.
Okay. We need a, we'll entertain a motion for the ordinance, the adoption of the ordinance. Mr. Jeter made a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Manis seconds. Any discussion, further discussion?
Any discussion, further discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes. And the second, we need a motion to establish amounts for small purchase procedure, correct?
Update those amounts. Update those amounts.
Okay, just update those amounts, okay. We'll entertain a motion to update amounts for the small purchase procedure.
Somebody, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Skeen made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Glover, second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, need to ratify a memorandum of understanding with APCA. APCA's the old RADA. Do you want to explain that?
Sure. In fact, a couple of months ago, the board approved for the county to apply for a planning grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development for Appalachian Community Action to help them with a feasibility study to see about expanding their business or buying a new building where they can consolidate everything, their out-of-space, especially in their warehouse area for the weatherization program. So the grant application was due in between December and January board meetings. So this MOA was done with the approval of the majority of the old board. So we just need to ratify this MOA. It was included as part of that grant application.
We have a motion to ratify the MOA with APCA?
So moved.
Ms. Addington made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manus second. All in favor of ratifying the MOA with APCA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Next on the agenda is a motion to add the new treasurer, Kevin Helms, to the bank account.
We need to have this in the record as removing Mitzi Owens as treasurer and also as finance officer for our grant documents with the Department of Criminal Justice and any other grants that we have where we have to have a financial officer because that treasurer position is that person. And we just need to remove her name and add Kevin Helms as the new treasurer, as treasurer on the bank accounts and for grant documents as the finance officer.
Entertain a motion to add Kevin Helms to the bank.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Ms. Glover made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is Scott Service and they're gonna come next month instead of this month for presentation. Next on the agenda is bookkeeping items. Ms. Vickers?
You should have a yellow summary sheet in your pocket. Please appropriate twenty-five hundred dollars to Sheriff's Office Repair and Maintenance of Vehicles, one thousand dash three one two zero zero dash four zero six zero zero nine for an insurance claim received in the positive treasurer's office. And appropriate twenty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents to rescue services for for life, one thousand dash three two three zero zero dash four zero four five six two one for money received in the positive treasurer's office. And that's all the appropriations.
Entertain a motion to approve the appropriation.
So moved.
Ms. Addington made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Grants?
And please accept E-911's Office Virginia 911 Services Board PSAT Grant Funding for FY24, Staffing Recognition Grant Number FY24-staff-zero-nine-seven with an awarded amount of thirty-six thousand dollars, two hundred, thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And the reimbursements will be appropriated as received in the positive. And please accept E-911 Office Virginia 911 Services Board PSAT Grant Funding for FY24, Data Maintenance and Data Transfer Grant Number FY24-dmdt-zero-three-two for an awarded amount of five thousand dollars. And please accept Sheriff's Office DCJS Fern Justice Assistance Grant, Local Law Enforcement Block LOLE Grant Number FY23 for an awarded amount of three thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars. And if accepted, please establish expense code for police applies, one thousand dash three one two zero zero dash four zero six zero one five dash zero one three six one. Reimbursements will be appropriated as received in the positive.
Entertain a motion to accept the grants as described by Mrs. Vickers?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Glover made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, the second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing to mention. Is the sheriff on the agenda today? Talking about maintenance, I'd like to ask the sheriff before he leaves the question on the maintenance. We always have and appreciate the sheriff and his department being here. They'll be here for the questions after. They will be. They will be, yes, I'm sure they'll stay. One thing I failed to do is Amy Vickers is our purchasing administrator and Tina Say is our administrative assistant along with these people up here with us, the staff, they're indispensable at this point. They do a great job. They've, they've been on the job a long time and they do a great job. Thank you, ladies. Okay. We'll move on into appointments. Jeter?
You have two members of the board supervisors that need to be appointed to the capital improvement committee.
As the way I understand it, and I stand to be corrected because this is the first time I've done this, but I think this is a three-year appointment.
That's correct.
And if you're on the capital improvement committee, you cannot be on the budget committee, correct?
That's best, yes.
Okay. The capital improvement committee takes a look at all the requests by the different departments in Scott County. And they rank them in order of how, that, that they think they should be fulfilled. That's the purpose of the capital improvement committee. Do we have two members that would want to serve on the capital improvement committee? Where do we go from here? Appoint?
Then you can pick them.
You can.
Yes.
Appoint.
Darryl, you've been around a long time. Would you mind doing this?
Okay.
And I think we need a, maybe a new member.
Yes.
Ms. Glover, would you be on the capital improvement? It's a three-year term.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Jeter and Ms. Glover on the capital improvement committee. That takes care of appointment, A, B, and next?
I do not have any applicants for the community policy management team elected official.
Do you have information to describe that? I've got somebody I can call, I think.
That is.
It's elected official.
It is elected.
I'm sorry, elected official. Again, an explanation of the.
Ask Ms. Mullins if she wants to.
Ms. Mullins, could you do that, please? Sorry, I didn't know that fell, I didn't see you back there starting with it. I didn't know that fell under your bailiwick.
The community policy and management team is part of the Children's Services Act. And that basically approves the state funding for children that are in foster care and different services in the county for at-risk kids to prevent them from entering foster care. So it's a group. We have a family assessment and planning team that are service providers that basically make the decisions on services and funding. And then the community policy and management team oversees that. So we meet the second Tuesday of each month at one-thirty. It's the, a member of Department of Social Services, a member of the school system, the Health Department, Department of Juvenile Justice, and a parent representative. The meeting's usually no more than an hour, sometimes less. But it is a significant amount of money that flows through that team.
Okay.
Questions?
Any questions? Anyone interested? I'm on the, the Department of Social Services board. It is a very rewarding board to be on with those, those children.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the meeting's much longer than an hour, you said?
Yes, an hour, I.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Manus on the community policy management team.
Darryl Jeter has applied for the regional jail elected official.
Okay, do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate Mr. Jeter for the regional jail authority.
And I'll make a motion that nomination ceases and we.
Vote by a nomination.
Vote by a nomination, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Need a second.
Need a second, okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
I abstain.
Yes. Okay, Pena?
There are no applicants for the Appalachian Community Action and Development Agency elected official position.
At this point, we. Again, I've got a couple of people I can call for this.
This elected official.
Elected official again. Okay, thank you all. Who would? Said you'll be good for this. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. APCA. Okay. All in favor? Need a nomination?
I'll nominate Mr. Skeens.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, Mr. Skeens. Social Services.
Michael Bricky has applied as the elected official for the Social Services Board.
Okay, I have re-applied. I'm currently on the board. I'm chairman of the DSS, so need a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bricky for the Social Services Board.
And the second?
I'll second that. Vote by a nomination.
Okay.
If there's no other nominations.
Okay. Somebody need to do that?
I'll, I'll make a motion that nomination ceases and we vote by a nomination.
All in favor?
Need a second.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you all for keeping me straight. This is the first time at this, so excuse me when I mess up just a little. I gotta read, oh, it's on here except just the start of it. Okay, now the Lenoisco Board, there are three positions available, correct?
Yes, and we have four applicants. Eddie Skeen, Michael Bricky, Chris Manus, and Darryl Jeter.
We'll do these separately. The, need a nomination for the first elected official?
I'll nominate Darryl Jeter.
Need a second?
Need more nominations?
First to start with?
You know, that's how you've been doing them. You take nominations and then if there's no other nominations, acclamation. Or there's three of these, you might, I don't know how you wanna handle that, but.
I, I look in Robert's Rules of Order and it says to take the first one. The first nomination, go through with the process, then do the second and the third, and whoever the fourth one is, is out. And that, that's what they recommend and it looked good to me.
So do the first two by acclamation and then fight it out on the third one?
Yeah. That's right. So.
Need a motion for acclamation?
Okay. Darryl, step, Ms. Addington nominated Darryl.
And I'll make the motion that nomination ceases and we vote by acclamation.
I'll nominate Mr. Skeens.
Hang on for the second.
This is the first one.
Let's finish the third.
Okay.
Need a second.
Need a second for.
I'll second.
Okay.
Darryl second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion that Mr. Jeter be on the first Lenoisco Board. We have a second. Motion by Ms. Addington, second by Mr. Jeter.
Yeah, need a vote.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Jeter has.
You made the second. Didn't you?
Yeah.
Thought you were gonna abstain from the vote.
Vote for yourself, girl.
Vote for yourself.
So that's the first one. Now the second position.
I'll nominate Mr. Bricky.
Ms. Addington has nominated the chair for the second position. We need a second?
A second.
Acclamation.
By acclamation, Darryl?
Yes.
Does that suffice?
Darryl makes a motion for acclamation?
Yes.
I'll second. Second.
Been nom, the chair's been nominated and by acclamation? Need a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's number two. One more. We need a nomination for the third position of the Lenoisco Board. Mr. Skeens has been nominated.
I'll second that.
Her acclamation?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Skeens has been nominated, Mr. Castile, an acclamation by Ms. Glover. All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Second.
And need a second on the acclamation?
I'll second.
Darryl, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's three Lenoisco Board members. Mr. Joe Horton is the public representative on the Lenoisco Board.
And the next one is for the Economic Development Board. Larry Culbertson has been serving on this board and he did reapply. And this is for a citizen.
Okay.
I'll nominate Larry Culbertson for the Economic Development Board.
Ms. Addington made the motion. Mr. Culbertson, do we have a vote of acclamation?
I'll, I'll.
Need a second on the acclamation?
I'll second that.
Ms. Glover, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, you have one citizen position for the Appalachian Community Action and Development Agency. And Marshall Tipton has applied for that.
Okay. We have a nomination for the APCA Board.
I'll make the motion to, or I'll nominate Marshall Tipton for the citizen position on the Appalachian Community Action Development Board.
Motion for acclamation?
So moved.
We need a second for an acclamation?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Manus, second. All in favor of Marshall Tipton for the citizen forward member for APCA, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, do you have the CLEO?
The chief local elected official is the chairman of the board supervisors, so you need to, uh, come ahead and appoint Michael Bricky to that position since he's your chairman.
I'll appoint Mr. Bricky to the CLEO Board. Or nominate, I guess. That's the way that works, nominate.
He just needs, he just needs to be appointed because that is always the chairman. The chief elected official is the chairman.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Of acclamation?
Yes.
Okay. Need a second for the acclamation?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Wait, we're through those. All right, now, next on the agenda is the county attorney's report.
You all have my report in your packets. I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for what you do, Ms. Kabley.
Next on the agenda is, uh, Ms. Horns, county administrator's report.
Your claims are in your packet and you should have a green sheet. The general fund balance after claims for the month totals fifteen million, three hundred sixty-three thousand, forty-eight dollars and six cents. You have a chart comparing the last several fiscal years on the second page. We're pretty much in line with where we were at this time last year, just a little below, but pretty close. And as far as claims for the month, uh, we had early sets totaling three hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Board meeting claims, one million, two hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents. Total claims for the month totals one million, five hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and sixty-two cents. On the next three pages, you have a list of all claims that are over five thousand dollars each. You'll see a lot of the fire departments and rescue squads on here. Uh, we paid out their allocations this month, so that's what those are, as well as, uh, we had two four-for-life payments come in, um, this, like, for the last two years. So, um, those are in here as well, so that's why the list is longer than usual. Uh, we've also, um, you just look down through there and see if you've got any questions about any and we can, I'll answer what I can. We have quarterly, um, payments that come out. Of course, the big one this time was the regional jail. Um, it's six hundred and three thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents. That's a quarterly payment, so that's why the claims are up more, um, with the bigger number this month.
Any question or questions about the claims?
If you don't have any questions, the total amount for approval is one million, five hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and sixty-two cents.
Can we take a motion to take care of the claims?
I'll make the motion that we pay the bills.
Ms. Addington made a motion to pay the bills. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. Any discussion further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? miscellaneous?
Under miscellaneous, um, there is personal days and a Good Friday holiday. Back in two thousand thirteen, this started with the board that took office at that time. They granted, um, two personal days to be used throughout the calendar year for county staff, and they also made Good Friday a county holiday, uh, that's not currently a state holiday. So this is on there today for your consideration, um, to see if that's something you want to continue through your term. Um, so it's up for discussion, whatever the board decides to do. And they can be, um, looked at separately. They don't have to be together.
Any thoughts? We have a, uh, nomin, a, uh, motion to adopt personal days and Good Friday holidays for employees.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Daryl makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manus, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Any F Y I, if, why, I?
And there was just a couple of things on your tablet under F Y I. Um, there was a couple of, uh, thank you letters from, I believe, APCA and from the brain injury where you had contributed to their budget this year. So those are just on there for your, um, knowledge that they did thank you for those. And that's all that I have.
Okay. We're going to stay in session for the, the, uh, quiet comment request?
We have John's presentation.
Do that, okay. And next on the agenda, Mr. Kewor?
Mr. John Kewor?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to be here presenting today and, uh, talk about economic development. And yeah, again, if you have any questions, as I'm going through the presentation, get the time to come up on the screen, in that nature, while I can. We'll start with small business support. And we continue, of course, to support small business and how we do that, we, of course, focus on existing businesses as well, but also the small businesses. We have a loan program and we support those with very many cuttings and you, uh, may or may not know, of course, we share also the Chamber of Commerce, so we actually share our staff. So, uh, you know, two-thirds of the staff is ZDA and the third is, uh, the Chamber face for that. So we do share staff and it's been great for us, uh, to have that, uh, staff. And as you well know, of course, uh, Penny knows a lot about everything, so if you have questions with either one of us, please ask either one of us and we will help with that. The one thing that we're working the Chamber on right now is the leadership class, which, you know, we do a leadership program with the Chamber and through the Chamber and Mount Empire Community College. And if you're interested in that program, I encourage you to take it or encourage citizens to take it. You learn a lot about the county as you take that leadership class. Uh, you go on a tour of the county and it's very beneficial. So we also do, uh, on the ribbon cuttings, we do a ninety-day Chamber membership to new businesses. We also, uh, recently, we did that about a year ago, we co-hosted Airbnb online workshop since that's, uh, a lot of movements been going on with Airbnb's. Also have to spread the word about entrepreneurship workshops. We have, uh, uh, organizations that, uh, actually sponsor those, like Small Business Development Center, the Virginia Community Capital, and we help sponsor those a lot and, and attend those events. And they could do those recently as well. Uh, of course, we're in the Lenoysco region, sometimes those are held in Norton, Wise, or, you know, we've had those in Duffield as well. And we've also helped Mount Empire Community College with the summer institute program, uh, and, uh, they, of course, uh, provide participants with the education on our, uh, love to industry and what we're doing in our region. And, uh, we have, uh, of course, worked with the, uh, agriculture on that side of it by creating a farmers' market in Nicholasville. We received a grant from Virginia Park Bank and also, uh, the ARPA funds from the county help with that project and, uh, that is up. And hopefully we'll have farmers using that to sell in the summer or spring, maybe starting in spring. The other, the program that we do, the loan program, we've had forty loans approved to date, uh, equated to seven hundred forty-four thousand dollars. Our maximum loan amount that we can do to a new small business, twenty-five thousand dollars. And that equates to eighty-six employees and the type of business, act tourism-related, twenty-two retailer, ten-support business. Uh, takes a lot of time to work with these. Small Business Development Center helps tremendously with this process. They vet that company, they have, they're required to do business plan, they're required to turn in financials. We have a committee that reviews applications and then they, uh, present those to the full board. And, uh, we have a financial person on that committee and, uh, they look at all that data and, uh, they make the recommendations to the full board and then the full board approves those. A lot of times too is that same applicant can apply to the Virginia COVID Economic Development Authority seed capital grant program. And they, they have a program that's a, to a ten thousand dollar grant and that requires matching funds so they could use our loan for that match for that grant to be ceded. Nineteen Scott County businesses have received grants from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two for a total of a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to the Virginia COVID Economic Development Authority. That's our regional economic development authority. Ribbon cuttings, we participated in last year, of course, the Mamaw's House Airbnb. We also had the, uh, Maple Tree here in Gate City. And we also had the grand reopening celebration of Food City, which, uh, of course, included the, uh, renewal of the store, over seven million dollar investment, but also, uh, you know, Starbucks, which, you know, you may think, well, Starbucks, but I actually had a prospect visit one time and say, where's the nearest Starbucks? Well, I had to send him to Kingsport. So we've got one in the county now, so we, I can answer that. We can go to wherever city and get Starbucks. So that's really good we have them. The, uh, of course, we also help with expansions and, uh, projects in and around Duffield. Of course, this is a aerial view or drone view of, uh, Timper Pity, Timper Sealy, and you can tell just by the footprint, by looking at, uh, basically about how many expansions they, they've had in the past, but they've had five expansions, uh, since their first announcement in nineteen ninety-nine. And, of course, we've been tracking that since, uh, two thousand one, two thousand two. Ninety million dollars in investment total, and, uh, that's, uh, great for the county. If you think about all the industry in Duffield, you're looking at about a one point three million dollars in tax revenue you're getting annually from the industry in Duffield. So with that expansion there, you also have another company, VFP, that, uh, that announced in nineteen ninety-nine or ninety-eight as well. They've had five expansions. Uh, the last expansion was about seven million dollars. Uh, those total expansions are close to sixteen million dollars, and, uh, they continue to grow there in Duffield. Initially had two manufacturing facilities and one in Salem and one in Duffield. They moved all their manufacturing here to Duffield. And so that's where all of it's done. They have some engineering in Salem, but, uh, they do all their manufacturing here. Another thing that we've helped with as well is the Family Dollar Dollar Free Store in, uh, in Duffield. And, of course, that will open sometime in this year, hopefully in the first quarter. And, uh, they had some issues with the site plan, the environmental, and we helped them through that process and, uh, they will, uh, take advantage of the enterprise zone later on, cause they, they did build in the enterprise zone and, uh, they'll get to the benefit of that as well. Another, uh, priority that we have is, of course, marketing our assets and assets we're talking about initially is the Creek Grove Tech Center and the, uh, Scott County Business Tech Park. Uh, so the Creek Grove Tech set, building sits in that park. And, uh, if you look at that, total grants for the Duffield that we've helped with is over nine million dollars. Total private investment in and around Duffield is a hundred and fourteen point two million dollars. And as I said previously, the taxes annually on that is over in excess of one point three million dollars. I'm just counting property, I didn't get into the detail of the, the, uh, the personal property, anything like that. I was just looking at it, property and equipment. The Duffield, uh, the Scott County Business and Tech Park sits right above the Duffield Industrial Park. There's no additional land available to be on inside the Duffield Industrial Park, so this was created to add additional, uh, land that, uh, we could hopefully get additional business on. So that started with the development of this site, which is a sixty, sixty-five acre site, we had forty developable acres of that. We've worked with TBA, we've got a, uh, pre-qualified data center site in this technology park. We've also, uh, worked on the Creek Grove Tech Center to make that. Uh, of course, it's a geothermal system, cooling system, and, uh, there are sites available next to the Creek Grove Tech building. We also have space available inside the building, which, uh, about forty percent of the building is, uh, not occupied, so we could actually build that out to the, whoever the customer moving in, their specifications. But it is, uh, you know, if you think about that, uh, it don't cost the county any money because we're actually, uh, getting revenue from that and then that revenue is poured back in to the building itself in maintaining the building. Annually, it costs us about ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars a year to maintain the building, but, uh, it's taken care of. It don't, it's not in your own's budget at all. What are, what we're working on now for this year is, uh, you know, and, uh, Fred and I had talked about this before, but the Duffield, that Scott County Business Tech Park, that was developed a long time ago, two thousand six. So in two thousand six, if we were looking at the categories that BEDP had on their tiering system that they came out with, we would be at a level four in two thousand six. They didn't have this program back then. So recently, BEDP came up with a tiering system and they, they put us in at level two, so we're at tier two. So our plan for this year is to get that back to level four because the studies that were done back in two thousand six are out of date. So we've got to redo those studies. So we'll have to do the, uh, the environmental and all that and get all that up to date that's included in, in three and get it up to four and hope to maybe a four plus. So it'll be ready to go and, uh, a lot of times when you're working with a prospect, they're wanting to know, uh, speed to market. How fast can I get in the building? How fast can I get on the site? Is it ready to go? If it's not ready to go, if I've got to move dirt, then I, I'm wasting time. So that's why we want to go and get this at a level four and work through BEDP. So we applied to, for a grant with BEDP, VEDP to the Visi, Virginia Business Ready Site Program, and we can match that to the Virginia Tobacco Commission. So we've got that on the agenda for Tobacco Commission meeting next week. So once they determine, then we can notify BEDP, maybe we'll get funding for that to get that to a level four. And we also, uh, in the past, we helped with the Dana Boone Interchange Center. Of course, that was county-owned. We managed the project and at the end of that, uh, project, when that was finished, then that was turned over to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, uh, National Tunnel State Park, and they're managing that facility. State Park, and they're managing that facility. Also worked on the Riverside Development, which is another property that initial investment of that was a little over two million dollars. And since that time, of course, this is the, the part that was actually rezoned, but also if we go back in time, there's always been a master plan that the board has been following. It's, it's a mixed-use site. So you'd have retail, commercial up front, then you'd have either line industrial or technology or medical in the back, and maybe housing in, on, around the site. So it's always been designed or had a plan to be a mixed-use site. And the old plan, and we, the board re-upped that plan with bars designed a couple of years ago, so that is the plan to do that. So since the initial two million dollar investment, there's been another two million dollars in grants, and also thirty-three-point-four million in loans for the building, the existing building that's there, tell it there. We've had leads that, you know, they have not panned out, but we've had leads to look at the building. We've had prospects to look at the building, three in last year. So it's good to have a building, if you have a building. If you go back and think about Timper, why did Timper come here to Scott County? Well, they came to look at a building initially, then they found the site. The site was across the road from there, and that's why they built here. And it was publicly owned site. So it's a forty-three acre site, that's what Timper's on. So that's why they were able to build and expand and then move on from there. Regional partner organizations that we work with on leads, on getting new business in, prospects. You have, of course, Lenoir-Wesco, you also have Virginia Cow Billig Development Authority. We have Invest, Southwest Virginia, that's, has provided leads locally. And we also have the RIFA, Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. Fried and I serve on that board, representing the county. That's comprised of LeWise, Scott, Dixon, and the City of Norton, and, of course, Scott County. But we're serving on that to, because we want to think about the county and that, but also we want to be reasonably focused. We can't depend on our workforce for our industrial park, because it is a regional workforce that comes to Duffield to work. It is a regional workforce that goes to Wise County to work at their view site. It's a regional, just anywhere in our, and we have to depend on Tennessee workforce sometimes, too, to come over here to work as well. So we have to depend on that regionalism. So we're also on the Crick Road. If you don't know, the Crick Road started in Scott County. The first meeting was in Scott County, at the Carterfold. So that's a twenty-year-old organization. Then you also have friends in Southwest Virginia that kind of grew out of that Crick Road and the regionalism at the Hartwood. So we have those things going on as well. To twenty-twenty-three prospects, we had, of course, two site visits last year. Site visits are not as frequent as they used to be when I first started. You know, you could probably have eight or nine site visits, but they're doing a lot of that online now. You don't have a lot of site visits. They'll look at you online, or you'll have a Zoom call or something like that. We've actually, these were actually two physical site visits where they came to the county. And we had seven prospects that have an interest in Scott County that we're still working on. One of the projects that we worked on with the Virginia Department of Energy and, of course, other entities, was the Devil's Bathtub Project. It's a three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-dollar project. We'd like one piece of that getting complete. The Appalachia Conservation Corps, they're finished with the trail work. We also got to finish the parking lot that's on the National Forest property. So when we finish that, then we'll be completed with the project, and we'll have some type of announcement at that time. They have improved the trail on these pictures. It'll kind of show you what they have done, is they've improved the trail. What they did is eliminate a lot of the stream crossings to make it safer. It was not safe. We've had incidents in the facilities. Fried and the county can attest to that. And we've had all kinds of incidents there where emergency personnel was, had to be dispatched in that, and it's hard to get to, so hopefully it may be a little easier. We'll have a lot better access there. And sales service has, has improved there. And, of course, the county has put in a hotspot there at our parking lot, and that has helped tremendously as well. And then this is the rope. If you've ever been up there, this is kind of toward the end of the, the trail. You had to hang on to that rope and kind of scoot across that mountain to get to the other side, so they've eliminated that, and they've built steps to go around it. So there's the view now, but you'll see, as you go up to the top, you'll see both that bottom and you'll see the Devil's Bathtub. It makes the view a lot, lot beautiful. Of course, then the Nicholasville Farmer's Market is the twenty-five thousand for the Virginia Department of Ag and twenty-five thousand for Mark on that. And hopefully we'll see, if I stand this way, we'll do some type of announcement with them as well, the Secretary of Ag. And there's a picture of that. Looking ahead, we talked about the application through VDP. We'll also continue to focus on the Riverside Development and Small Business Development Assistance, and, of course, the Carterfold fiftieth anniversary and the Crick Road twentieth year anniversary. All that happens in twenty-twenty-four. Any questions?
Ms. Tarns is going to cover some of the answers you had for the questions that were presented. We got a lot of questions during campaigns about the EDA, and in specific Riverside. Could you go over the Landstar and Riverside Agreement and kind of lay it out on what was the agreement?
We only have, what we have, the EDA is a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Landstar. They will help us in marketing the site and also help us in come up with a plan for housing and then present that back to the board.
So there's no commitments? On the vetting, that was another question that was, that you responded to. Seems like the vetting process of new prospects is less than desirable. Do you have any recommendations going forward on the vetting process? Well, the one that comes to mind is Mountain Top. Why did that go wrong, and what can be done to prevent that from happening again?
Well, in that, the vetting process on that was, we depended on the regional organization, which the regional development authority was involved in that, and also, a lot of people don't remember this because they weren't involved in the court cases, Virginia Community Capital, which is a financial arm, where it was also had funds in the project. And they were out early on, but they vetted the project, too. So they reviewed all the financials and everything, business plan, along with BCDs. So there was, there was not just one person, one group involved. There was us plus two other organizations involved. And I think it's always good, and you said what can, what do we need to do? Of course, I always work with the region, and I always work with the state. Sometimes the state gets involved in those, and they'll tell us whether that company's a higher risk or not. If it's a new company, they consider that a high risk.
Any properties, well, the, you mentioned in your responses, Crick Road Tech Center, sixty percent capacity. Is there any delays in getting someone in that property? Is there anything standing in the way of getting someone in?
I don't think so. I think that we had, of course, we had somebody that actually moved in some of the offices last, let's see, in November. So they took five offices that were kind of, you know, they were next to Kamatsu, and it would've been hard to use them with the other spaces rented, if you understand what I'm saying. So they took those five offices. So that, there was nothing that stood in their way. Upstairs, it's unfinished, and that's what's left. We could finish it out, but then you might finish it out, and then the company may not want it that way. So you might be wasting money by finishing it out. So you might just leave it unfinished and let them, let the company, or work with the company to finish it out. So that's kind of where we are. We could get, go for a grant to try to finish some of that out, if you think it would help. But again, I don't know if that would help us or not.
There was a water pressure issue on the second floor. Has that been resolved?
The water pressure's been staying constant. Armin has been checking that, and it's been staying.
So the fire suppression system should be working?
Yeah, that should be good, yes. Thanks for the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelp.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a five-minute break and resume. And resume.
Before we begin, the question of a new board member. It's been pointed out to us that on February first and second, several of us were in Richmond. So we won't be able to attend that meeting. If we went ahead and changed from Thursday to another day, Monday and Tuesday would be available, I mean permanently, to meet on Monday or Tuesday. I just wonder how you felt about that? The school board meets on, sorry?
February? What day is that?
That we would adjourn to February the seventh. If we're not here the first or the second. But what I'm saying, the school board meets on Tuesday and there's no reason that we couldn't meet on Tuesday instead of Thursday. Meet the first of the week instead of then. How do y'all feel about that?
That's fine.
Tuesdays are fine.
Okay. Do we need a motion to that effect, change it to Tuesday instead of Thursday?
Does that mean we're changing it all?
All the time until Tuesday, yes. Need a motion in the second?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to change the meeting date to Tuesday. What do we have, six o'clock?
At six P.M.
Six P.M., yes. We have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Glover makes the motion that we move it to Tuesday at six o'clock with a second. Mr. Manus second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that goes to Tuesdays instead of Thursdays. I think that'll be better earned on weekends.
So the February meeting will be the first Tuesday?
Yes.
It'll be the sixth, isn't it?
Yes. Six. Six o'clock. Okay. Now, next on the agenda is the
Mr. Skeen recommended that I just briefly go through each one. Is that still what you'd like done? The first section is on rural roads. The first question is how is the VDOT budget determined for each county? So highway funding for the six-year plan is derived from state and federal gasoline taxes, vehicle title fees, vehicle sales tax, and one-half percent of state sales tax and distributed to the primary urban and secondary systems after addressing maintenance, admin costs, and other priorities established by the Code of Virginia. Distribution of available secondary construction funds is based on code, which establishes a 20% area and 80% population factor. The area of each county is derived by GIA S mapping and population figures are obtained from the Weldon Cooper Center at UVA. The distribution formula results in less populated areas receiving less funding than urbanized areas. Unpaved road funds is based on a ratio of unpaved secondary roads in the county serving 50 or more vehicles per day to the total number of such roads in the Commonwealth as indicated in the Code of Virginia. The unpaved roads fund was created by the General Assembly to address the need for paving secondary unpaved roads. The predictability of funding amounts is greatly dictated by the financial climate of the times and changes of funding levels by the federal government. Explain the six-year plan for paving roads. Local Board--
Could I ask, there's several pages here. Would it be okay with the new members if we took turns? I'll just read what she had prepared. That's going to wire her out.
Well, we had discussed, I don't know if you had time to do it, is just ask the question or stakes of question and then just hit the highlights of each answer rather than going through detail.
I'll try that.
Okay.
I hit the highlights of that one because it's four pages or four paragraphs.
Okay.
Explain the six-year plan for paving roads. The local Board of Supervisors are provided funding from federal and state sources through VDOT. Secondary six-year plan is usually done in the spring. It's for six fiscal years. VDOT supplies a list based on the roads that we have given them. Once the roads are depleted on the plan, each board member, this is locked into the next question as well, what factors are considered when adding projects to the six-year plan? What's happened in the past? In the last seven years, there's only been one year where we've added, had to add roads from the Board of Supervisors. And that was probably about three years ago. And at that time, what they did, each board member brought a road that they were interested in having put on the plan. The board members all voted in ranking order from one to seven. The road that scored, I don't remember if it was the highest or the least, but we had that based out from one to seven, went on the plan first. So all the roads from that plan at that time has been added to the plan now. They were added last year, the last of those. So if there's extra funding in the budget this spring, the Board of Supervisors will go through kind of the same process or whatever process they choose to put the roads on the plan. That seemed to work pretty well for the new roads. So each board member will pick a road from their district or I guess they could pick any road and then bring that to the full board to rank to be put on the plan next in line. And that does happen in the spring. Explain the work order process for road repairs. There's a VDOT customer service center. I'm sure if you've got road issues, you know about that. It's at my.vdotvirginia.gov. There's also a link to that on the county website. If you go to scottcountyva.com under residents, down at the bottom, there's a report a road problem link. You can go into there to report your road issues. So this answer was supplied by Ellen Semter. The customer is provided a unique service request number that they can use as a reference for updates. Based on the type of need, the request is forwarded to the appropriate party in VDOT for investigation and resolution. Maintenance issues in Scott County are directed either to the Patinsville or Fort Blackmore Fort Blackmore area headquarters, depending on the location. Safety sensitive issues, of course, get priority. And cleaning out ditches, grading unpaved roads, et cetera, such as routine maintenance are prioritized within the headquarters' work plan. How can residents track the progress of their work order? The question has been answered as part of number four, so let's see. When a customer request is received, VDOT staff members attempt to contact the customer.
Anything I can help you out with that?
Okay.
According to Mr. Semter's response, he said residents have a problem, they call into the customer service. They get an assigned number. Within three days, correct me if I'm misstating this, within three days, they'll have an onsite visit from one of their people. And a short time after that, they'll be calling you by phone to let you know what the status is and the work plan. Then if there's any changes in that schedule, they'll get back with you and tell you what the schedule change is. The people here that have gone through that process, is that the way it works?
We have never got a call back from, I don't know how many work order numbers. You've been, Stephanie called in, Dust Control. All during the summer of 2023, we got one dust control treatment, one. But I've called it in several times and I had never heard back from them.
From what I'm hearing, from people when we campaigned, others jump in.
Yes.
There's no communication. Once you submit the work order, it ends at that point. So I think we need to give it--
Sometimes you will see a VDOT truck drive through, but that's it. No contact other than seeing him on the road.
Could I say, when we went to Richmond last year, year before last, one or the other, we had the main man from Richmond over VDOT there. We had people from Bristol there. And they promised us that they would send us monthly, I think it was, Rita, updates on everything in Scott County. And I think we got two, two--
Two months, sorry.
And in two years, that's all we got.
Yeah.
So when we go back in February, that'll be one thing we'll bring up again. That's all we can do.
Yeah, and Mr. Semter will be here in February.
We can ask him these questions. Seems like there's a disconnect between his office and the field. What he's outlined in his answer is perfect. I mean, if it worked that way, I think everybody'd be happy. But to me, from what I'm hearing, it's totally opposite of what he stated in his response.
What is the mowing contractor's bidding process and their typical mowing schedules? VDOT uses statewide EVA procurement system to solicit all maintenance contract work, including mowing. Contracts are developed at the residency level in accordance with VDOT central office requirements and advertised for bids typically in the winter months. Like all contracts, an evaluation of bids is performed after the bid date and a decision made regarding award. At the onset of the mowing season, a pre-work meeting is held with the contractor to discuss their work plan and discuss safety items. VDOT tasks the contractors to perform mowing within the scope of VDOT's best practices. These practices include typically mowing primary routes three times each session, each season, including completion of the first cycle prior to Memorial Day holiday, and the last cycle approximately close to the first frost of the fall season. Secondary routes are typically mowed twice per season. Weather conditions are a strong variable each mowing season, and thus additional or less mowing cycles may be requested of the contractor. And I do know that the area headquarters will come out if there's an issue with site distance. Like if you're having to cross the, I know where I live, if I make the left onto my road off of 23, sometimes the weeds get really tall there, and if you're in a car, you can't see the oncoming traffic. And if you put in a request for those, they will come out and weed eat the area immediately where you can make the site distance safely.
I had one person tell me that Kedzie was probably coming off the state road onto 71. She had to listen to see if it was oncoming traffic. Because everything, she couldn't see. And I have a feeling that happens a lot. You're having the same experience.
There appears to be staffing issues within our county VDOT department. Is there anything that the county can do to assist with their recruiting efforts? VDOT presently has a staffing level of 27 employees assigned to the maintenance offices located in Scott County. During calendar year 2024, I guess it should be 2023, there have been several employees who have left the agency due to resignations or retirement. Recruitment efforts have resulted in employment of three new employees, and there are an additional five who are in the final stages of hiring. There have also been three positions filled by internal transfers from other work units. Presently, VDOT has not experienced any issues with recruitment for the Scott County offices. It should also be noted that VDOT uses contractors to supplement its workforce in Scott County, including hired equipment to assist maintenance crews as needed. Service contracts such as mowing, traffic control, tree trimming, and asphalt patching are also used as needed to accomplish work. And you were supplied a copy of the VDOT Board of Supervisors manual to use as reference, and a VDOT Best Practices manual was emailed to you yesterday afternoon.
Could I say one?
Sure.
Mr. Semter, in his response, said they had the full staff. They didn't have a problem staffing their departments. But I did get a call in regards to work orders. Said they were understaffed here locally, and they couldn't handle the work. So again, there's a disconnect between, in this case, Wise and their field offices. And that's something we can address with Mr. Semter. But is anybody else hearing this, or?
Yes, I have, Eddie. Heard it several times. Well, Frieda, this red, all over the county. I don't know anywhere that they've mowed it three times in the last several years for every year. Frieda red there at Dan, yeah, about frost time, they'll mow it the second time. Of course, here where I live, on Highway 65, a lot of deer. They'll step right out of the high grass in front of you, and there's no way you can miss them. And I'm sure you folks is having the same issues. The step, Frieda red, it sounds good, but it don't work with VDOT. I tried to sign up several years ago to mow. Said it'd be two years before the contract come up. I waited. I call them up thirty days before the contract's supposed to come. Oh, we done filled them. I said, why didn't you send me one? So what Frieda's reading here, maybe it's the way it works, but it don't work on the other end somehow.
That's why, we need to talk with Semter when he comes.
So, listen, I don't want any of y'all to think that we are not listening because I think we've all had the same issues that you folks is having. And so that's something that I will be looking at to see if we can get some of these problems solved for you.
Could I make a comment? Sure. Just to talk about the disconnect between, I think there's a disconnect between their contractors that they contract or cast. I'll give you a prime example. Like, here for last, in the spring, they put down news, painted all new stripes on the lines on the highway on the Rocko Memorial. Listen, two weeks later, the slurry people came in and put them slurry over the brand new lines that they just painted. So there's huge disconnect between the contractors that they use. So basically, it's a waste of money, county money, taxpayer money, by strapping the lines, coming in two weeks later, covering the button, having to go back and re-strapping again.
Okay. The board members would like to do a public work session on ongoing road issues. That'll be scheduled coming up. Mr. Dingus did come up with a sample survey that was requested in these questions. The survey, we're going to try to get that distributed to school bus drivers, sheriff's deputies, and U.S. postal carriers to see if they'll help complete the survey. And it goes into like information of which one of those they fall into, a bus driver, a deputy, or a U.S. postal carrier, where they're seeing unsafe road conditions, the frequency and timing that they're seeing these issues, and any suggestions and recommendations they have for the concerns about the road issues that they see on a daily basis. And then a place for some comments and conclusions. So we'll try to get, you know, if that's the majority of the board's feelings on the public work session, and the survey will move forward on that. The next topic is self-service dead zones. There are widespread cell phone dead zones throughout the county. What is the current state for improved coverage? And I did talk to Mr. Kilgore, our building official, and he does not have any work orders or have any new contact recently with cell phone companies. We've had new towers on 72 and in Nicholsville most recently, but besides that, that's what we have on our cell phone coverage right now. Trash, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Dingus, for the survey. Did an excellent job on it. We spoke to Mr. Kilgore earlier about a work session, which Ms. Darnes referenced. We're wanting to do a work session on roads, another one on cell towers. It's my understanding that Mr. Kilgore would be available at some point in the future. I don't know if he said when, but it sounds like April. Is that kind of, he said March is pretty busy through the March? Is there some, with the other boards' thoughts on it? But could we try to schedule something for April for these work sessions? And that would be Mr. Kilgore on the parts of the roads, Mr. Pillion, the VDOT people, including Bristol and Wise and locals. Other board members want to comment?
Could be a good idea, but you know, the less meetings the better. So if we could get them all in one-
One day.
Probably be more likely to get the people that we want.
I'll check, and it depends on when the budget's passed. That can get drug on, but we'll make contact and see what their schedule looks like for April. The next topic is trash and convenience centers. What is the current strategy for hours of operation at convenience centers? We currently have those centers staffed 24 hours with part-time employees. They're open 24/7. They close at 8:00 P.M. on Saturday and reopen on Monday morning at 6?
Seven.
Seven. And the only two that are closed at night are Yuma and Carter's Valley, and that's because of their proximity to Tennessee. The reason that we cut back from the convenience centers being staffed 48 hours per week was during a budget reduction about eight or nine years ago. So that's why we are, those people were cut, the number of people were cut in half. So that's why they're unmanned at certain times throughout the week. They are there to keep, to try to keep the Tennessee residents out, to keep the sites clean. They do shut the gates when the trucks come in to dump for safety reasons for the citizens where they're not in, trying to throw their trash in when the trucks are trying to do their operations in the sites. Why are centers closed at times during normal operating, normal scheduled operation? If a site gets closed, it is because they are full. We have a truck issue, and we're not able to get there. As you saw this past week, that's the busiest week of the year for trash. So your site was probably closed until we could get around to all the sites. With the number of sites that we have throughout the county, we can't be at every one of them at the exact moment. So it takes time to get throughout the county. If they're left open, we have shown that individuals will continue to add waste on top of the full bins and/or stack it on the ground. This takes time for the truck drivers or the attendant to have to load that trash up and put it in a dumpster before it can be dumped. They cannot get into the boxes if there's trash littered all around them, bags piled up. So that's why the gates do shut when the bins become full. We have a transfer station in Midway. They're open Monday through Saturday, eight to four. It's never closed during those times. So if you go to one of your waste sites and it's closed, let's say at 10:00 on Tuesday morning, you do have the option of taking your trash to the transfer station because there you can just dump it out on the transfer floor instead of having to put it in a bin. This also works if you have a lot of household trash that you're getting rid of at one time. You know, if you're elderly and you're not able to throw the bags over in the bins, if you go to the transfer station, you know, you can just push it out onto the floor instead of having to put it over into one of the bins. That works well for some of the elderly people. And usually, we only see sites full on Monday mornings or right after a holiday. It's been working pretty well as far as having to be closed during normal operating hours unless it is a holiday or spring cleaning that get back up.
I have a comment on this right here. With Weber City discontinuing their trash pickup, that's made it a problem with those folks having to go to either Hiltons or going to Yuma. Is there a possibility of us putting another site out to help with this? Because these centers are getting closed, and I understand it was holiday and all that. But I do believe that there's now going to be more trash coming to Hiltons and going to go to the Yuma community, too.
I have met with VDOT. The one we had in Moccasin Gap was on VDOT property, and that was closed during the construction period and was not allowed to open back up per VDOT. I have met with them to talk about acquiring that piece of land. So that's still in the works, so it may be something that can happen. We'll just have to see about that piece of property.
Okay, good. That'd be great.
Weber City has about 800 households that was on their trash pickup. A number of them may privately contract with a contractor to keep that service, and a number of them may start visiting those sites. So the true effects of that is yet to be seen. We'll know more, you know, you can ask me that again in six months. We might be able to have some tangible numbers. This effect is, or we're seeing Yuma, we see Yuma full every day anyway. But, you know, we may see Hiltons full more often. If the VDOT thing doesn't work out, we may have to look at alternatives, which would cost, you know, finding a site by an equipment.
I live near the Hiltons trash site, so I've noticed that there's more vehicles coming up the road and going to the site. And when I've been going to the site, they've been pretty busy, so.
That just started this week, though, right? I mean, they had household pickup until-
The first of the year.
First of the year. Remains to be seen.
Well, I think that they were having issues with just the people coming out and picking up the trash. Nobody was coming to pick it up. So a lot of people were calling the area that were the pickup center, so.
I did have a couple more, and have you covered that pretty much, that area? Would adding more bins create more tonnage? Or would you still get the same total tonnage?
That was one of your questions, let's see here.
Number four.
Number four. Okay. The number of dumpsters at the site is not necessarily the limiting factor on how much waste we can move through the county. If you think about the solid waste, we call it a waste stream. It goes from you buying the stuff at the store to your trash can in your kitchen to the waste site, to the transfer station, to the landfill, where it's finally disposed of. So that is like a stream going through. So like at Duffield, for example, not every site has room for additional dumpsters. Let's say Duffield does, you know, it's a big site. So there's about 14 dumpsters at Duffield presently. So there's probably room to put 14 more. However, the truck it visits Duffield Monday morning can handle about 25 dumpsters. It's according, I mean, that varies a little bit, how much it will pack, if it's wet, if it's packing more. But anyway, 25 dumpsters before it has to go unload, either at the transfer station or the direct haul to the blunt. So it would go to Duffield, and if it picked up all the dumpsters at Duffield, it wouldn't be able to go early to Clinchport, Rocko, other, maybe Fort Blackmore, other sites on that run, and those sites would be full and may have to close. If that makes sense.
It does, where you have the opportunity to place more. What's wrong with leaving them there with trash in it?
Well, that would help until they all filled up, and then you'd still be at the same capacity of being able to pick up what you could.
I'm thinking, and I saw some pictures this week, people camming the site's closed or it's full, and on the way home, it goes over the hill. I'd rather have it at the site and the extra dumpsters than on the way home.
Well, Mr. Skeen, if, say you had those 28 dumpsters at Duffield, and all of them filled up, but we could only pick up 25 of them. And by the time we get back around to all 14 sites, those 25 are filled, or those 14 are filled up again. Well, once the other dumpsters are filled up, you would never catch back up.
So you're saying by adding more dumpsters, there's more total tonnage at that site? Or is it just, there's more? How can that be?
Well, people-
Say if you got 50 tons a week at Duffield, and you've got 15 dumpsters, you add 15 more, when you still have 50 tons, it just, instead of people going and not being able to unload, they had to go home with it, or they throw it over the hill, why not leave the extra dumpsters there and let them use them? And just whenever you get to it, you come back and fill up?
That may, that may work sometimes. But we're visiting almost at least 13 of these sites or 12 of these sites every day, six days a week. And if we don't visit the site, they fill up. They're filled up the next morning. So if Duffield, if you had 28 dumpsters, ours, it'd be full.
What I'm saying is just pick up the 15, 14 or 15, then go back to Rocko and finish your regular route. You're still going to leave like 14 dumpsters with trash in it, but that's okay. It's not on the ground outside the facility. I'd rather have it in there in dumpsters, sitting, waiting to be picked up as thrown over the hill on the way home. People don't like to go- People don't like to go and not be able to unload.
No.
With the gate closed, so that would prevent the gate being closed, I think.
Would we have to purchase more dumpsters?
Yep.
Definitely have to pu- purchase more dumpsters.
Yep.
How many trucks do we have?
Like I said, our, our capacity is the, the number of trucks we have.
I was gonna say, that's the limit.
Adding more trucks and more drivers would increase your capacity to keep it moving through the waste stream.
Yeah, dumpsters isn't really doing it. The trucks is the issue.
Another question I had, uh, commercial locations. I know we have some in the county. Can they just go and use the facilities at convenience centers?
Commercial, like the stores?
Stores.
A store can take like a bag of trash or recyclables to the centers.
Like Cardboard?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in Weber City and Gate City, on the commercial locations, how do they handle theirs?
You'd have to ask Gate City.
I think they'd contract with Waste Management, some of them.
I think, some of the, uh, like Pals, for example, I think they'd contract with Waste Management. But they, I guess they see that as a, a easier payout than having somebody from their store haul it to a center. Having a truck and all that.
I think a lot of times, the home remodeling and new construction fill up the bins pretty rapidly.
Yes.
Is there any way to?
We have contractors and people that abuse our sites because they're not manned when they're open. Convenience comes at a cost.
Yes.
We cannot man them twenty-four hours a week and have them open twenty-four seven, Monday through Saturday, and control Tennessee trash and contractors misusing it. Which we just can't do.
Is there any way to require contractors to have to go midway and unload?
They are required to go midway, midway and unload their, uh, uh, stuff.
So if they use?
Use the sites.
If they use a local site, then they're not, that's illegal?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what evidence does a judge or the Commonwealth attorney need to successfully prosecute the misuse?
Well, they need, uh, uh, that's a wide open, you know, I, you could have a witness or you could have camera footage that shows that we've, we've gotten convictions on a gracious misuse, uh, somebody dumping right on the ground, uh, you know, intentionally backing up, dropped their tags, and had convictions. Uh, but normally, uh, it's very lenient or none at all on prosecution of people going in and using open bins, regardless of who they are, where they're from. Uh, we just haven't had a lot of luck getting big fines on that.
Which, uh, you mentioned educational measures as preventative. Is that working?
I don't know why anybody would not be educated, not litter and to use their, uh, sites appropriately. But we have people that both litter and misuse the sites. Uh, it's a, unfortunately, it's, it's just a, a selfish mentality and they care about more of their, their convenience more than just following basic rules.
You do a litter campaign. You do a litter awareness campaign.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we do a litter awareness campaign every year. Uh, Stacy Cook, an outdoor control officer, uh, uh, has participated in the school programs.
Uh, co-mingle trash, uh, like metal and wood in the big, big bins? Once that gets back to Midway, what do you do with it?
We have metal bins and junk bins. We call them junk bins. They're for large, large furniture, like at the sites. People are supposed to put the metal in the metal bin for recycling it. And their sofa in the, the other bin. Uh, when it's so mixed up, that's not feasible to, uh, we, we've had metal bins that's been so contaminated that we couldn't do anything with it, and it's just sent on to the landfill. Uh, but we, we, we're pretty successful in, uh, recycling our metal. We, we recycle anywhere between three hundred to four hundred thousand pounds of metal every year. Uh, the way that works, we have the metal bins at the site. Uh, when they fill, the guys haul it to a metal pile that we have established at the, uh, landfill and keep record of how much is coming. Uh, when it gets over three hundred thousand pounds or so, they'll let me know. And I put out a RFP, uh, or request for bids, uh, asking who will, who wants this metal pile, and they, they bid it per CT, which is hundred plate. Uh, currently, we've got one that just went out, and Thompson Metal got the contract for dollars, uh, a CT. So they kind of pick the metal up, haul it across their, uh, transfer station scales, and haul it and do whatever they do with it. And then when they're finished, they cut us a check, uh, for that weight divided by a hundred times their bid. Yeah, I think the last one maybe was about seventeen thousand dollars. Yeah, it's usually around fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars. And that, that weight varies, uh, because when they tell me it's three hundred thousand, well, they're still hauling. And while they're picking it up, they have a month to pick it up and get it out there. We're still hauling, so it always varies a little bit. And there's some waste in that too. Uh, there may be a swing set that has a bunch of plastic on it that, uh, you know, it's not necessarily metal, so it ends up in the trash.
Uh, does the EQ prohibit trash from being, uh, stored on the, on the floor in Midway?
Yes, yes.
Everything's gotta be in the trucks?
We're supposed to have, we, we don't. Supposed to have any open trash, uh, on the floor. And we do, we do a good job of that. The only time I know, and since I've been here, that we've had to have trash on the floor overnight is when our loader broke down, and we, we didn't have anything to push it in there. And, uh, and that was just one, one night, I think, that, uh, we had to leave it. But yeah, uh, we've got to push it over in to the.
The reason I ask, I just wanted to thank you guys for hours of unload and leave it on the floor, but you're saying they can't?
Local, I mean, just leave it open?
Your people.
At the.
Your trucks.
Oh, no. You run it like a second shift?
Yes.
Kind of thing? No, that wouldn't.
Somebody's gonna be there to push it in.
Yeah, we're gonna pack it up, yeah.
Uh, couple brief questions here. Uh, the VDOT removal of orange trash bags?
Yes. There, there's around three types of circumstance that you would have that you would see orange bags on the side of the road. Uh, one is our, uh, assign a highway program and a litter control officer administers. And these are people on probation that's put into that program that a litter control officer assigns them a section of highway. A lot of these people, uh, don't have driver's license, so those highways are usually assigned pretty close to where they live. And they'll have a section from here to here, uh, and pick it up and put it in orange bags. They report to Stacy, or a litter control officer, what they picked up and where they picked up. And Stacy sends that to VDOT. And a little, an email, usually copies made. And, you know, it'll be three or four different roads, orange bags here. So that's how we report. Uh, another way that you see orange bags is the Scott Services Program in the county. Uh, they may have a crew out picking up the stretch. They usually hit the, the bigger roads or a problem area. Uh, and, uh, and Justin Venable, uh, I think, I'm not, I'm not so sure on that. I think he contacts, sends VDOT that directly, uh, from, uh, uh, from him. I don't think he goes through Stacy to do that. Uh, and then the third, you might see one of the jails or prisons go out and have a crew. And usually that's when you see the blue bus and the guy with the shotgun and, and a crew picking up. And third process on informing VDOT, I don't know. But ultimately, it's VDOT's responsibility to pick these orange bags up, and they are told where the bags are. Uh, uh.
Do you feel like that's working?
No, sir, I do not. No, I, I, I get just as frustrated as anybody when I see faded out orange bags with the weeds growing up around it. And, uh, and, you know, I've, I've made the joke, it, it seems like people don't care much about the litter bin on the side of the road until it's in an orange bag. So when, when it gets in an orange bag, it, uh, they should call us about it, ask us. And I, and I understand, but it's one of those things that, uh, uh, we don't have the manpower to do that. And it's VDOT's responsibility, but I feel like if we ever did it, we'd own it forever.
Yes.
So we, we've got to be really careful about, you know, we'll be, we need to pressure VDOT to make sure they do.
Based on Mr. Senter's comments, they have enough people to get the job done. So again, that's another question I think we need to ask him. And the last question on that is, uh, are you finding, having any delays at the Bluntville landfill with your trash trucks unloading?
Occasional. Uh, they're going through a process right now where they're closing one sale and opening another, and that has caused a little bit of delay in the, in previous weeks or here lately. Uh, but for the most part, it's, it, uh, runs pretty smooth. Uh, you know, wh- why we directly haul to the, the landfill is to save the haul bill from the transfer station, which is about seven dollars a ton. And, uh, I'll recheck my calculations. If I'm wrong, I'll let you know. But it looks like we're, we've saved up to fifty thousand dollars since April on direct haul to that landfill, minus any difference in fuel, uh, that. Then that's a little bit, uh, we, it's a little bit longer to go to Bluntville than it is to the transfer station, of course. But, uh, it's significant savings. And it reduces the stress on the, uh, uh, transfer station of loading trailers. Reduces the number of trailers, tractor and trailers coming across Midway Road. And our paper trucks going across Midway Road. Uh, so, but yeah, we, we, we encounter some delays sometimes. Uh, and, you know, when it rains, it's, they're backed into a landfill. Uh, we've had a few tires that we've had to replace. But when you count that with saving fifty thousand dollars, you know, it's worth the aggravation, I guess. Drivers might have a different opinion, but so far, it's, it's, uh, seems like something we ought to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner. Next, we have Commissioner of Revenue, Office, and Taxes. And these questions were sent to Ms. Taylor, and she provided the answers. What would be the assessment benefits from changing from six years to four years for a reassessment? The advantages would be most, more cost-effective, less public outcry due to less change over time, possibility of missing bubbles in the real estate market or avoiding drastic changes in value. Some disadvantages, property values not reflecting the market value. This could result in property owners being unfairly assessed. More opportunity for missed structures due to property owners building without a permit. Data integrity issues stemming from a longer amount of time passing before the information is looked at. Possibility of more drastic changes in value if values fluctuate significantly during the lapse time between reassessments. Advantages versus disadvantages of an in-house assessor? The advantages would be better handling of the data and more knowledgeable about the market, more control over the process. Disadvantages, less cost-effective in most cases. The county takes on the burden of public outcry. The county has less control of their information and data, and the county has less control over public relations. Land use classification versus the current method? Advantages, qualifying control uses of the land does not apply to residents. Less tax liability to the landowner as long as within the land use program. Disadvantages, referred to Virginia Code fifty-eight point one dash three-two-three-seven. It's complex. There's rollback taxes come into calculation for the land use difference once removed from land use. This has been looked at by Scott County in the past. I would suggest the committee and more research study to have a more complete understanding of land use. And personal property tax, when is Kelly Blue Book updated for purposes of vehicle valuations? Scott County has subscribed to the NADA, which is now JD Power. We always use the valuations listed in the January edition of the tax year being processed. And note, we do not have this option directly this year as it's not being offered by JD Power. We are speaking with a couple of vendors to weigh the best option for this service for 2024. Regardless, there will be a higher fee per vehicle being valued since we can't go directly to JD Power. Enter departmental communication. Suggestions on improving communications and working relationships between the Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, and School Board. Uh, my suggestion would be, um, to respect the independence of the Treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue. Uh, these positions are elected officials, and they don't have to answer to the Board of Supervisors. And they, there is a lot of funding that is mandated, which means the county is required to pay. And they have the sole responsibilities for their offices and staff. I know sometimes they get a lot of heat from the Board of Supervisors, but in the end, they do run their own offices the way they feel is the best. Um, a joint meeting with the members of the School Board may help improve communication with the school system. Uh, we are mandated to pay a local match, and the state does tell us that amount based on the local enrollment. Um, I feel like myself and Mr. Ferguson have a good working relationship. The county and school system have central purchasing and central accounting department. And what this means is that the county office processes all school system payroll and all school system purchase orders and checks for bill payment. The staff with the county and the staff at the school system have a good working relationship. The school system staff are in and out on a daily basis, and they have a good working relationship with our county staff. Uh, PSA versus Scott County roles? The Board of Supervisors appoint members to the PSA Board. The PSA Board oversees, uh, the PSA Director, and they have the responsibility for operating water and sewer infrastructure in the county. Uh, the PSA Director does give a quarterly update to the Board of Supervisors. And to my knowledge, we don't have any communication issues between myself and Mr. Dishman.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Going back to schools, do you have any idea on the services that Scott County provides to the school system that Scott County's paying for?
Um, I did some quick calculations. Uh, we have three staff members that do a lot of work with the school system, um, from running payroll to doing their checks each month. And I've estimated that to be around forty-three thousand dollars, um, with their estimates to me on the time that is spent on school system-related items. Uh, we also have thirty-nine dumpsters that are at sixteen different school sites, including Headstar and the School Bus Garage. Uh, back in two thousand eighteen, when we did our Waste Management Proposal, uh, those calculated to a cost of around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, if they were picked up the same throughout the year. But looking at that, um, in the summer months, you know, they're not there every day. So my guess would probably be about a hundred and fifty thousand, when you take summer into consideration, of just what, you know, we provide to them, just in a couple of services like that. As far as external communication, uh, what procedures are followed within each department when receiving resident phone calls and providing follow-up? Uh, when we receive a call, uh, they may, we have a system, you know, where you go by departments. Uh, you may get a message from somebody. Uh, if it's not the correct department, you know, we have the option to forward that to someone else. Or if it's something that we can't answer, uh, we can send it to whoever can answer that question. Uh, we'll try to gather as much information as we can and provide them with a resolution or a referral to another department if it's outside the county. Um, a lot of times, you know, personally, I'll have to get a name, phone number, and, you know, if I can't answer their question, find out. Um, a lot of times, you know, personally, I'll have to get a name, phone number, and, you know, if I can't answer their question, find out an answer and get back to them. Uh, so there is follow-up involved from the staff member in the caller. And what concerns have you all received about this? Is there, have been?
A lot of people say that they call in, never hear from anybody.
Is it county or a constitutional officer?
I would say mostly county, but I'm sure it's both.
Okay.
One, uh, one area is animal control. That, uh, what's the policy on animal control? Somebody calls, uh, calling, yeah, the timing of the response.
All I can tell you, Mr. Keane, is what I've found in, in the past, uh, and I've talked to the animal control officer about talking to people. Uh, a lot, a lot of times, he'll get a call about a issue, uh, or a complaint. He'll go check on it and either resolve the situation or do what he can do as an animal control officer. And, uh, but he hasn't called a complaint back to let him know what he's been doing. So, the, the circumstances being, I'll get a call from someone saying the animal control officer never, I gave you this complaint, you never went out and looked at it. Well, I'll call him immediately after I get off the phone, and he say, yeah, we, we did this, we did this, 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 and this. And so, I'll call the person back and say, this is what he's been doing. And, uh, I've, I've spoke with him about calling that complaint back and let him know, e- even though it might be a simple issue. It might be a stray dog that he found the owner of and gave it back to, and no charges, no problem, but still to let those people know that you did that. So, it, it's not that the situations or the complaint or is not being taken care of. It's a communication problem that we're working on.
Is it just him that's working, that's going to these calls?
The litter control officer that I mentioned earlier and our animal control officer are cross-strengthened in that they back each other up.
Okay, so they are the only two?
They're the only two.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Now, there, there's certain, a lot of the animal laws are state laws, so, uh, a town police officer could actually enforce that in the town, or a deputy could enforce it. Uh, but that's usually not in their scope, uh, so usually, it's one of those two.
I would suggest with the board's approval, it's just reinforced maybe through a memo to people that report to you.
Yeah, Bill put this together, um, so we could share that with all the staff. Uh, this would be the proper communication chain of what to do with calls.
I was gonna ask you, Bill, um, does animal control just work eight hours a day, or what kind of shifts does he have? If he has to go out later in the night or whatever, kind of?
Animal control and the litter control officer work four tins, and they alternate that off day, so one of them's on. So, so they're, one, if one of them's off Monday, uh, one guy's on, but they're working ten-hour, ten-hour days.
Does?
And if they get a call out, uh, they'll go out if it's an emergency. Yeah, it needs to be an emergency. Uh, we, we'll, we'll get calls and we'll have people call in aggravated that animal control didn't come last night to get the dog in their yard. Well, a dog in your yard is not an emergency, uh, but if a dog is trying to bite you, or is killing your cows, or something like that, then they'll, they'll come out. If it's in the act of it, you know, it's, and he uses his discretion on that. If, if you call and say, this, this dog was chasing my sheep two hours ago, you know, he'll ask, is it, is it killing your sheep right now? And if it's not, he may not come out that night, and may go take a look and try to find out whose dog it was and the situation next day.
But, uh, what do they start, like, eight o'clock in the orange to ten o'clock or for ten hours a day, is that?
You know, it's seven to, it's ten hours a day, seven to four, something like that.
How, how did you ever get a hold of, call nine-one-one, or?
You can call nine-one-one and they'll dispatch you. Uh, they, they have, uh, it's, uh, I think it's ninety-five and ninety-six, and, uh, they'll, they do it all the time.
Uh, wrong gangster. Uh, wrong gangster. I tried him. I had a pig in my yard one day, and he rooted my yard up.
Okay.
Lime or we can go through it. Drove around, here comes a pig out of the shed. Right down through there. I called nine-one-one. They tell me they're busy at the time. I'm here, they are, they're after somebody right at the meeting street with Duffield, and I'm agree that it's busy. They said, uh, nothing we can do about it. I said, if I have a cow out in the road, there'll be a county deputy or a state man there in less than fifteen minutes. I'll greet, they said, we will call you back.
This is the dispatch?
Dispatch, nine-one-one, okay? I waited from six o'clock to twelve o'clock at night for a call back. I think I sure waited long enough. I called him back and said, well, we'll send him out in the morning. Well, I did miss him, he did call, and very nice family, and, uh, and I called him back, I missed him, but he did show up. They did come down there, and they found the pig, and he tore another yard up and then another place around his front. But I believe we need a better communication. It wasn't his fault, I'm gonna blame it on the deputies or the nine-one-one system that didn't want to contact.
Well, uh, I don't know what was going on with nine-one-one that day. Uh, I'm sure they might have had calls, uh, on what might be going on, uh, but normally, you can call nine-one-one, and usually, that should be an emergency if you call nine-one-one. Kind of get animal control out.
If you call the sheriff's department, you still end up with nine-one-one every time I've ever called.
But you can, you can also call downtown animal shelter.
Every six o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, uh, that's, I don't know what was going on that day. I know normal procedure, i- if you have an emergency, you call nine-one-one, they'll dispatch animal control. Uh, or they may text you, uh, your number.
Right.
You know, they may not, they may text you your number, and he'll give you a call, and he'll talk to you about the pig, and he'll use his discretion whether he thinks that's an emergency to come out after hours, or I'll come and look at it next morning, and we'll try to find out whose pig that is. Uh, situa-, uh, uh, help you with the situation. And, uh, you know, it don't always flow as smooth as we want it to, but, you know, that's the process.
That's just one of the things I, I encountered a few months ago.
Next, we'll, uh, Mr. Kilgore stepped out, we'll see if he steps back in. We'll go to Social Services. Um, these responses were provided by Ms. Mullins, uh, the Director of Social Services. What is the working relationship between Social Services and Scott County? Um, the Department of Social Services has an excellent relationship with the County Administrator's Office, and I will agree with that. We don't have any communication issues. How are foster parents and children monitored, including communications? The provision of foster care services is based on state and federal regulations and monitored for compliance by both state and federal monitoring. Foster parents are approved through a detailed approval process, including a family assessment, background checks, home inspection, and training. The monitoring of a foster home is at a minimum of a quarterly visit in the home regardless of a child being placed in the home. Monitoring is more frequent during the times a child is placed in the home. All children in foster care must have a monthly contact by their caseworker regardless of where the child is placed. However, depending on the needs of the child, contact could be daily or weekly. Communications are not monitored unless there is a safety concern that would warrant monitoring communications. We strive to provide children in care with as much normalcy as possible. Children in care typically have supervised visitation with their biological parents, which allows their communications with their parents to be monitored unless the case progresses to unsupervised visitation. The degree of communications, which are monitored, are on a case-by-case basis and based on the assessment of the child's safety. Vehicle allocation and usage. The Department of Social Services has provided an operating budget from the state to administer the agency. This includes all operating expenses, including vehicles. The Director, with the local board's approval, determines when vehicles are purchased based on availability of funds within the admin budget. The purchase of vehicles is managed to maintain a safe, independent fleet of vehicles rotating older vehicles out of the fleet as they reach high mileage and/or develop maintenance concerns. The vehicles are used for all agency travel within the county as well as statewide and out-of-state travel. There are designated vehicles allocated to specific units within the department. For example, the department has specific vehicles for child protective services on-call equipped with police radios and available twenty-four hours a day for emergency response. The department has other vehicles for use by all staff, and these vehicles are assigned out by the individual staff member during, individual staff member using the vehicle. Do you have any questions for Ms. Mullins, or those, what you were looking for? Okay. Next, we'll do the Economic Development Department. Uh, those answers are attached, um, in the back of your packet. These responses were by Mr. Kilgore. Over the last five years, what tools are working and not working when recruiting new prospects? The items that continue to work on recruiting are the continued focus on our regional economic development partners who supplies leads, having an existing industrial manufacturing building, and having available publicly-owned land. Have experienced projects die because the owner is not wanting to sell or is priced way out of range for the company to consider. Number two, what is the county's role in identifying potential prospects? We acquire prospects a number of ways. The projects come directly to us, the locality, and we work these project, prospects, and have regional and state organizations that can, we can involve as well. The prospects can also come through our regional economic development organizations or the utility providers. Prospects can also come through the State Economic Development Organization, VEDP. Regional and state organizations have specific targets that they chase and participate in events surrounding those target industries. What is the vetting prospect for new, process for new prospects? The projects are vetted through the regional authority and the state in most cases. On new startup companies looking to locate, the state requires financials and a business plan. Explain the working relationship between the EDA and the Scott County Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors appoints the EDA Board, and the EDA works to attract industry business to the county. The EDA meets monthly and reviews projects, and also, the Director presents quarterly to the Board of Supervisors. How does property ownership get designated by EDA versus Scott County? The Board of Supervisors has transferred ownership in the past in order to develop that property for economic development purposes. A good example of that is the tech park in Duffield. Which properties currently under the EDA and Scott County control are not producing revenue? Counties in the state have property that is acquired over time and developed using, utilizing public resources. These sites and buildings are utilized to entice development and make it quicker for a company to locate. The timeframe for business to start in a locality has become shorter and shorter as one of the company priorities is usually fed to market. Revenue is produced a number of ways, by taxes on property, new jobs for the property, and new private investment in county property. What does the Riverside property include, buildings and land, the total acreage? The total acreage of the Riverside property is ninety-nine acres. That includes two buildings adjacent to US twenty-three and the garages next to Weber City Discount Tire. What is the status of the Riverside property? We continue to market that as a potential housing site, and we also continue to market the existing building. In twenty-twenty-three, at least three different companies visited the building. We continue to have other interests in the housing and are working with our engineer with an RFP to send out potentials after the January EDA meeting. What is the Riverside agreement? That was answered during, uh, John's presentation earlier today. Does the Riverside property create any revenue or expenses for Scott County taxpayers? The EDA has been able to get an additional five million dollars in grant funding for the site and also constructed a building that was leased for job creation. The company moved out during COVID, and so far, there's not a new tenant. The Regional Economic Development Authority loaned the Scott County EDA funds to construct the facility, and we managed the building and sent lease payments to VACITA for the loan. We have not made any payments since the company moved out. However, the regional authority works with us to get another tenant back in the facility by actively marketing that building. If another company wants to move into that facility, the VACITA Board has to approve the request, and new agreements have to be signed. What is the occupancy status of the Crip Road Tech Center? There is no debt on the Crip Road building currently, and any revenue is utilized to maintain the building. The building is approximately sixty percent occupied. Which buildings in Thomas Village are owned by the county or EDA? We do not own any buildings in Thomas Village, but own land in the rear of the subdivision toward the water tank. The county does own one building in Thomas Village, and that's the Thomas Village Community Center that is currently leased by Three Bales Methodist Church. Next, we'll move into Public Works.
One thing that, uh, John did cover, I think, all the questions we had, and I'll, I'll say, he's not got an easy job. You wanna come up, John, if you, this is, this is good. I know you don't have an easy job. The, I'm thinking, from my perspective, the incentive package is what draws people in, and I don't think we have a big incentive package just based on the county's revenues. Would you agree with that?
Well, incentive package, we work with the state and regional authority, and usually, the regional authority has a great, like, building, the building for the Pelleting was a great example of that. So, we, the county could have done that without their help. They loaned us the money at zero percent, and then we were able to lease that back to the organization at a lower cost because their, uh, uh, jobs, the same as ours, they want to create jobs and investment in our, in our county and in the region. So, that really helped us, so that incentive has helped, the state incentive, how we matched those grants, we have to match those a lot of times fifty-fifty, like the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund to the state. We matched that with enterprise home. So, the state has a designated, I mean, the county has a designated enterprise home, one of fifty-seven in the state, and we're able to use the tax revenue, you know, and, for example, so temporary expands, I'll use that as an example. And on that expansion, they will get tax benefit back off of that for, if their wages become, if they're two and a half times the minimum wage, which the minimum wage is increased, we all know, then they would get a hundred percent of their taxes back for a five-year period. But they could get the tax rebate back for seven years. And some have got up to nine years if they stay in at two and a half times. But it's hard for a company now to get two and a half times because, you know, that's a higher average wage than it used to be. It used to be set twenty-five, you could do two and a half times, now it's moving to eleven or something.
I just wanted to say that I know you don't have an easy job. I did get one question during break, and that was, uh, who's paying the expenses for the property, the electricity, or anything else that is with the property now since it is vacant?
We, we continue to do that, we get a little, uh, little revenue from those two properties up front, the businesses that are located there, so we're using, utilizing that to pay that. You have to keep the lights on and the water on because you got fire suppression system there, and you also got to take care of the property, so you have to maintain that. So, you can't just automatically turn the lights off and not have any security, security there at all, so that's how we keep it up. We've not, uh, built the county for any of that at all. We've been using what we have to get by. We've been using what we have to get by so we can get another tenant in there. And luckily, the VACIDA's not asked for rent payments, or we wouldn't be able to do that either. Thank you.
Next, we'll move to Public Works. How are animal control calls handled after hours? Mr. Dingus has already touched on that one. Who is responsible for providing supplies and cleaning the porta-potties at convenience centers? We have a contract with a company that services those. We were having some issues, but they got that taken care of with a staff person that they had. So as far as I know, we're not having issues since that was taken care of. How often are convenience center sites graded and gravelled? Sites undergo grading and graveling as needed. We have a $10,000 budget to take care of all 14 locations. Typically, a load of gravel at each site is around $600, so that's a tight budget to take care of those with. Who is responsible for grading the sites? While it's not particularly their responsibility, our maintenance crew of two for General Properties takes on the task of grading the sites. We have a small tractor with a box blade that we recently purchased, and they've been able to keep the sites in good shape with that.
I just sent Randall a text and asked him what sites they graded in the last month, and he wrote back, Carter's Valley, Hilton's 58, Hilton's, and the Okanagan Apple. So they've graded five sites within the last month with that.
Any questions there? Regional jail, what is the funding formula, state versus county? The Commonwealth pays the salaries for all regional jail employees through the comp board. The localities pay 4361 per inmate per day for operating expenses and 927 per inmate per day for debt service. That's the current amounts for this fiscal year. This information was provided by Stephen Clear. He is over the regional jail authority. There's no standard funding formula. The state budget is determined every year. The authority receives reimbursement for salaries and FICA benefits for funded positions. We also receive a per diem for inmates hailed of $5, and starting...that was the new rate. Starting in December, it was previously $4 for each inmate hailed awaiting trial, and $15 for each inmate considered state responsible. I have attached the 2023 reconciliation that shows how the actual per diem is determined for the localities. The remaining expenses are divided among the localities based upon actual inmate numbers. This is why some counties are reimbursed and some have to pay at the end of the year. So I did include that reconciliation for you to see what that looks like. We have a amount that the regional jail gives us of inmates they project us to have during the year, and that's what we pay on. So at the end of this year, at the end of June, they'll do a reconciliation. If we have less inmates averaged for the year, we will receive money back. If we have more inmates than that budget number, we have to pay a reconciliation in next...the next budget year. So that's how that works. How is the life-saving crew compensated for medical transports? EMS agencies that transport from the Duffield Regional Jail have their billing agencies submit a request to the regional jail insurance clerk. This is a new process from what had been happening. I talked to the chief at Duffield Fire and Rescue, and they have been paid for all but three calls this year. So hopefully, this new process is working better for them to get reimbursed.
I hadn't heard that, but that's great. It was a problem for a long time. I talked to him this summer, Mr. Carter, and he said that they were losing money for the transports, so that's good to hear.
Are all regional participants sharing equally in the cost? Yes, we do share equally in the cost because of the way the funding formula is set up. And right now, inmate counts are down region-wide, so that will determine how our budget fluctuates with inmates. This past year, I believe all the localities got money back except for two, and they had to pay. So the numbers are down jail system-wide, not just for Scott County. Why are inmates released onto the streets of Duffield without transportation out of the area when they have finished their sentence? Inmates are released from the facility, and they are offered rides back to the county courthouse of their original charge. This has always been offered. Most do not wait for the ride. They either live in a different county than the charge, or they don't want to ride with an authority employee back to that courthouse location. They are free individuals at this point, and we cannot make them go back to the courthouse. A few of the facilities are serviced by county transportation buses and have groups of volunteers that offer rides. The rides from volunteers are usually set before release through churches, even with rides offered, meaning will not wait. I guess when they get out, they won't out. What are the financial benefits to the county taxpayers for the Scott Services program with consideration given to jail cost savings versus management and admin costs? To date, the Scott Service Program has saved the county over 4.6 million in jail cost savings. Scott Service enrolls between 50 to 60 participants at any one time and has maintained this capacity throughout its existence. This figure does not take into account the residual savings of those served, given the skills and opportunities to be successful. The program serves the citizens of Scott County by providing resources to combat drug addiction through a supportive opportunity to encourage and empower those living in our community to make lifelong changes for the better. And we have had program graduates come to board meetings in the past and tell us their story of how they were in the program facing jail sentence and how the program helped them to overcome that, and they successfully completed the program and told us how that's impacted their lives. Additionally, another cost savings technique offered to the citizens of Scott County and performed through Scott Service are in the form of capital improvements. They do work well with Public Works. Like I said, we have two paid staff, so the extra work...extra people to help with that work is always welcome, especially in the summer when we have all of the mowing to take care of. Usually, one of our Public Works employees takes a couple of the Scott program workers out with them to complete all the mowing tasks. They also help at the Scott County Park and Golf Course, at the schools, the Pioneer Center, and the sheriff's office and courthouse. They'll help with janitorial services and various projects. They have had some people in the past that have trade ability, so we've had some really good work from them because they have this specialized skill that would cost us a lot of money otherwise. Conservatively, we estimate these capital improvement cost savings to the county to total between $150,000 to $200,000 per year. They do...it's an alternate sentencing program. It's a diversion. If you are in the program and you don't have a GED, they will let you do GED classes to help with that. So that's helped a lot of the people that's been through the program get their GEDs. That helps give them a step up when they're out of the program to hopefully have successful lives going forward. What is the inmate recidivism rate? The regional jail does not track the rate for their facilities. The Bureau of Prisons reports a rate of 43%, whereas the last reported numbers for DOC were 20.6 in FY '18. Scott Service success rate is 55%. To our knowledge, only a handful of successful participants continue to have what they need to remain successful, along with the will and desire of our participants to continue the progress they made while supported in the program. This program offers second chances in a supportive, encouraging environment or vital to a person's path to recovery and the confidence to make lasting changes. So any questions about any of the jail questions or Scott Service?
Just to mention that Mr. Ickers can probably verify. Good job they do when they go out. I know the log house that you have in Nicholsville. He did a presentation one day, and that was a great job on that, so.
They do a very good job, but I'd agree how much tomorrow.
Since Mr. Kilgore's stayed with us, I'll ask him a question if you feel like you've accomplished something. Ms. Darnes was saying that each inmate is responsible for paying $200 a month that's in this program. Is that the case?
Yes, it is.
Is that working?
Yeah, and it's kind of a...it's kind of a built-in punishment of the program, whereas if somebody, you know, let's say they committed a crime, they've got a year or something on other guidelines, for example, gives us an opportunity to save the county money. I think it was $43.01 a day on that, but it just gives us another option for that person. But it also, at the same time, they've got that financial punishment as well. They're not just getting on the scot-free, and it kind of gives them skin in the game, as opposed to just not going to jail at all.
So pretty much everybody's paying the 200. Do you have any difficulty? The only other question I had was, what's your average daily count on people on job sites on a daily basis?
I have to ask Mr. Venable on that. I think we were actually supposed to present today, and our administrator had a medical emergency this morning. I could roughly get the number, but I don't want to be incorrect on that either, so.
He's planning to come in another February. So we covered them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we had some questions on the sheriff's office, and you have those responses in your packet as well. The first one was, residents are requesting additional patrols in their communities as drug trafficking is on the rise. The sheriff has said that he has two deputies in the county on night shift and could use two additional deputies. How could this be funded? The sheriff replied that on most nights, they have three deputies working 12-hour shifts. If a deputy is on an arrest or has someone encased for mental evaluation, then that only leaves two deputies to cover the county. If a deputy is on vacation or on a holiday, the shift only begins with two deputies working to cover the county. If one of the above scenarios happens, then a single deputy is left to cover the county and has no backup. The Virginia State Police usually goes home at midnight and are on call-out status only. I feel the casino money could be used to fund these positions. The understanding I have is that Scott County receives a disbursement over a year for their part of the revenue sharing. This money reportedly is to be used for certain categories, and public safety would be one of those. We have a total of four rotations, two on days and two on nights. Ideally, four additional officers would help tremendously. We can place two on days and two on nights, thus making four officers on each shift. Are grants available for law enforcement personnel? At times, yes. With certain...with grants, certain criteria must be met. For instance, some require an officer to already be a certified police officer, and generally, the salary for this is on the lower spectrum. With the low pay rate, an officer who is established at another department will not leave to take a pay cut and also have to worry about the longevity of the grant. Some grants also require a match from the locality. Are school resource officers available to assist outside the school property if needed? SROs are deputies just like the patrol deputies. I do not like to pull a resource officer because in doing so, that generally leaves the school uncovered. They work full-time during the week and then are scheduled to cover ballgames at the schools. On occasion, a resource officer may take vacation, and they'll still come out to do transport to pick up a wanted person in another jurisdiction or state. Do school resource officers receive the same training as other deputies? Yes. SROs must attend the same basic academy, which is now 20 weeks. They must also attend a one-week School Resource Officer School. Are school resource officers available to the county during school vacations and holidays? Generally, they are off during these periods as school personnel. However, during the summer, the officers are required to participate in training. Occasionally, they must also assist in other duties. Any questions for the sheriff?
I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Eads. Thank you for staying.
You're welcome.
We've...Ms. Darnes has given us a number of services that is provided to the Scott County school system, and she estimated it's $150,000. Maintenance, you get any maintenance through the school system, through their bus shop?
We have more changes and minor freight replacement or something like that.
Have you had them do more work in the past?
Other than that, I think that's about it to do with what they will do.
Would that be an asset for you if they could service your vehicles? What would you estimate the cost savings would be?
We went through it there about a year ago, or two years ago, that we was taking it out to...we advised of just whatever their closest garage is, trying to get it to them. It was going to be a whole lot more. Our budget decreased more rapidly doing it that way than doing it through the bus garage.
You have an estimate about what it would cost outside?
What was it, about $40? I don't know, oil changes, maybe $40, $60, something like that. But in the past, years ago, I know the bus garage used to do a lot more in-depth things, you know, more like water pumps or starters, just any of that kind of stuff. But, you know, times have changed now, and I'm sure the school system is the same way. You know, they're doing more with lifts, and so they've got their hands full, and so they've been kind of gracious enough to do the oil changes, stickers, tire rotation, that kind of thing for us. It's really convenient for us, being like a garage mate, put you off a day or two before they'll schedule you in, and then those guys is going, you know, they're putting several miles on the vehicle, and a lot of them was running over because they couldn't get in in a timely manner, but the bus garage is usually a quick turnover.
We were just looking at ways to possibly hire more people, and, you know, where's the money come from? And personally, I think this might be one area that might help.
Yeah, well, it would really help if they had the persons in that garage that's capable to do a more in-depth repair, but they're...and tying up their bay for a longer time, that's a problem for them too. We had something going there that will take a week to get apart, and they've got to go down there, and it's tying up their bay too. So it's a...it's not an easy solution at the moment. As of right now, we may have vehicles that...I don't know. We've had one mechanic that worked on like three vehicles in retirement providers out there, and so, you know, that would...that would complicate things for the bus garage as well, with the amount of staff they have. Those guys would do a good job, and they help us well, but, you know, we have lots in there to do with what they've got.
Another thing that I was just thinking one day, do any of your officers share vehicles?
Not usually. We try to keep spares, and which that's...that's dwindling down. Their cost of repair is sort of getting outweighing the value of the car. I don't know, nobody shares it. I know unless it's an emergency, one has to get it up. We don't have a spare, and somebody else goes down at the same time, and then we may have to...we may have to do that.
What's the cost of, like, a new vehicle that's fully equipped?
I have to give you an example of what we've had. Like a Dodge Durango, it's probably one of the...we used to...was buying them for $28,000. Now they're like $34,000, and you click everything in during the 50-some, $60,000, which time you put off quickly.
I'd say $65,000 at least.
We haven't done it here, but I say the price is quite low.
Let me ask one question, and this has been a couple of years ago, and Stephanie Monhip, she was on the Budget Committee, and Freda and you two. You say you have three deputies. With this being said, if deputies on vacation or on holiday, the shift only begins with two deputies working to cover the county. If one of these above scenarios happens, then a single deputy is left to cover the county and has no backup. Correct me if I'm wrong, but two years ago, didn't we approve another deputy to take care of vacations and holidays? Do you remember that?
Obviously, it's happened.
I thought Jay...I thought Mr. Darnes or you both came through our budget.
That was a grant position, grant manager and...
Oh, grant manager was separate, but there was a...
You're talking about the hazard...the emergency overtime pay?
Yes.
That was in the budget this year for the first time?
I thought it was longer than that.
That was to cover if somebody's out and a deputy has to work their off day, they can get paid overtime instead of comp time. That...this was... This was the first budget year for that.
That was something to help us manage that.
That's what I was thinking of, okay.
That was to help us manage that, make it somebody come out and work and pay them overtime.
So giving them comp time because they would have ended up with, they could end up with significant and not be able to take those days, right?
And then you've got to cover for them to take the comp time off, so it's the same situation.
Same situation.
That's what I meant.
I think that's $10,000. That was, this was the first budget year for that.
Ms. Keenan is right that just, you know, finding the money, we understand the need, but just finding the monies.
We manage it, but, you know, it's hard for these guys to cover ever with three people, people all up there, and they have other calls, and they're doing reports, you know, that takes a lot of time, and they're at the office doing reports, and then they get another call. Most of their time is spent, you know, some patrolling, hopefully a lot more, but it's tied up with other issues. You know, if they get ECL, that's a, that could be a all night, 24-hour, 36-hour. You know, we have to send somebody to see it, so it's a balance of that. Keep them safe, too, without working with two people alone. I don't like that scenario. Investigators, you know, they're overwhelmed right now with a lot of, a lot of crime, child crimes, and it's happening, and it's just, it takes them a lot of time to investigate those, and it's seemed like the last year or two, it's just tripled. The distress on these guys that's doing it.
That's one place I want to say you're doing a great job in Atlanta back there, too. Every time you go out for a child, probably you have people going with you, don't you, Larry?
Yeah, Chief Merritt, I want to, I think it increases.
That's really sad.
Just looking on the report, she didn't say anything about sharing vehicles. Officers are on call as well. You know, if middle of the night something bad happens, you may have to call, go down to call tree, call four or five hours, whatever. Those officers respond, they're probably, you know, I know we had that situation not long ago, and probably half the department was out, and, you know, they responded straight from home, just didn't have to go to the sheriff's office, where to get a vehicle and all that, they responded straight to the scene, and so, you know, it really works out, you know, an officer kind of take off the car.
Anything else for the sheriff?
Appreciate what you do.
Good job.
Next, we have the school system. I believe you all were sending those directly to the school board members.
I think some of us had already contacted our representatives, passed on some information.
And tourism, do you want me to touch on anything here? I know you already talked to Pam. Personnel and administration, do all county positions have a job description? Yes, all county positions that report to the county administrator do have a written job description. They do have yearly annual performance evaluations. Those are usually in December or January of each year. And employee handbook, we call that a personnel plan. It's just our lingo here, and all new employees do get that. We do not have a human resource director. How are positions compensated county versus state? Payroll is processed once per month. The payday is the 25th of each month. The county pays for all payroll expenses upfront. Constitutional officers then request reimbursement from the compensation board for themselves and their staff, and those monies are received and deposited at the treasurer's office. County employees are paid by revenue brought in by the county with no funding from the state unless a portion of their salary is grant-funded. One that comes to mind right off is the litter control officer. About $20,000 of his salary is grant-funded. How are salaries determined, starting with maximum? Starting salaries for county employees reporting to the county administrator are determined by a pay scale that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in June of 2023. Baker Tilly, who is a professional services firm, did a job market evaluation, market assessment, and they developed a pay plan. There was 10 localities that the Board of Supervisors chose to be compared to, and they sent out the information to those localities and formulated the pay plan based on the responses to that. They came and did a presentation at the board meeting, and that was later adopted, I believe, at the next meeting by the board.
And the reason we did that is we were losing employees by the numbers from the county, from social services everywhere, to Tennessee or the other surrounding counties. We were trying to keep employees because you can't find those people very often.
911, the trash dump, drivers.
We were losing.
The drivers, that's what we were having problems with.
What is the annual salary progression plan? Cost of living increases for the county employees are at your discretion. A lot of times in the past, if the compensation board employees received an increase, then this board would also do a cost of living increase as well. The personnel plan allows for a merit increase of up to 2% annually for employees that have a satisfactory performance evaluation. Those are recommended by the department director with the approval of myself before the merit increase goes into effect. Which county physicians receive the use of a county vehicle? Any licensed county employee can check out a vehicle for county use. We do have a pool vehicle available. Which county physicians are authorized a county vehicle for personal use, and are there any restrictions for personal use? County employees aren't to be using vehicles for personal use. How are vehicles acquired, purchased versus leased, new versus used? Vehicles are purchased on state contracts when available. Since the pandemic, this is nearly impossible to do. Like the sheriff mentioned, Durango's, $28,000, that was a state contract price. To get any kind of vehicle on state contract now is almost impossible. The last two that's been purchased were by sealed bid, and new vehicles are purchased either in a budget line item or they're financed by the county. We currently do not have a lease program that we're involved with, and all vehicles are owned by the county. Do we have a grant rider? We do not have a grant rider for the county. The county administrator, assistant county administrator and staff have successfully applied for grants and administered those grants. The sheriff's office does have a position that they use for grant writing and for their accreditation purposes that's funded by the county, but not for the general county. Is there an opportunity for a grant rider on an as-need basis? At this time, my answer would be no, and that's because the greatest amount of writing a grant is the narrative, and you're going to have the staff, or whoever, department director, whoever's wanting that grant, is going to have to do the majority of that work anyway, because an outside grant rider is not going to understand the county and what needs to be included in that narrative to be successful on the grant. And I did mention, instead of a grant rider, a grant manager might be a big benefit. That would be a person who could write the grant, as well as ensure that all reporting and reimbursements have been completed, and maybe this could be a position that would be shared, not only with the county, but with the constitutional officers as well, and then that workload would probably justify the benefit of having that person. So are there any questions on those items?
Is that pretty much rapid, or anything? I'll have to say, on behalf of the new members, we tried to pull questions that people had asked us during the campaign, and we did present them to Ms. Darnes, and right away, she got on it and got a lot of people involved, got answers, and we appreciate that. And is there any way that we can make this available? You know, we talked a little bit about that on the website or either through the newspaper?
I'll talk to Lisa about the newspaper, but we can't do the website.
But we do appreciate your efforts and your time today. I think what people have heard today, it would take them 12 months of meetings to hear on what you presented, so thanks.
Appreciate all the people who came in today.
Well, Mr. Helms is here. We haven't, did he want to say something, or?
Tell us how much money you're going to bring in for us.
Kevin, he said something about how much money he is going to bring in. I'm worried how much money I can keep in my pocket.
My concern, and I talked to Frida, and she's made me feel better about it, is letting people pay taxes twice a year when we need money in the fall to get started. But she says we're in better shape now to do that than we ever have been, so.
That's something that I did campaign on to look at, the possibility of twice-a-year billing. That's something that would take at least a couple of years to implement, so I think it's definitely worth looking at and first study, and not something we want to jump into right now, but it's definitely something to look at if it helps the people in the county, and it doesn't provide a damaging situation to us financially, but the way to implement that is going to take a couple of years.
Is anybody around us in Virginia doing that?
A lot of counties do.
Are they? Okay.
I know Wise County does.
I'm anxious to hear from that, because I know it would help our people.
Absolutely.
Do you think that we could maybe get it down before the next tax season?
Before the fall this year?
Yes.
I don't, no, it would take, it would take at least two cycles to implement.
But now people can come in and pay taxes?
Yes.
Anytime through the year. You don't have to wait on your tax bill, right?
A lot of county employees have, and teachers have.
Automatic.
Automatic debits come out to pay.
You don't have to wait for your bill.
You can pay anytime you want to, any amount you want to.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Glad to be here, glad to be back.
Good job, Ms. Darnes.
Yes, thank you.
I tried to, I've been helping there to start with, but you did well.
I knew we'd miss it.
You did well.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of our agenda, and we just need, unless there's any further comments, any further comments? We need to adjourn to February the 6th at 6 o'clock. Is that correct?
6:00 p.m.
You're going to have a closed session.
No.
Nope, I'm off it on the web.
Laura's open to a motion?
That's always on the agenda, in case something happens.
I'll make that move.
Whoever made the motion, do we have a say?
I'll say. Go ahead, go ahead. No, 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 no.
The name is, say, in the hall of favor, say aye.
I'll let you do it.
All the votes.